Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. Welcome, for those of you who are wondering why the goofy-looking dude in the yellow tie is sitting in the mayor's chair tonight. I just remind you that it's customary that if the mayor cannot make a meeting, that the chair of the council sits in. And it is always an honor and a privilege to do so. So bear with me tonight. We'll get through this, and thank you all for coming. Clerk, I would ask you to read the roll.
Council members, Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale? Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Recky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Thank you. As we do in every meeting, we begin with an invocation, and tonight we are... It's a pleasure to have Eric Avarco with the Director of Children, Youth, and Family Ministry at Holy Cross Lutheran here with us this evening. She's going to do our invocation, so I would ask you to stand for the invocation, then remain standing for the pledge afterward.
The Lord be with you.
Yes, with you.
Invite you to pray with me. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Tonight, I pray for those. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of all of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved, welcoming city of Sioux Falls. It is in your utmost name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on. Looking for the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Nitzer.
Motion made by Erickson, seconded by Nitzer to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Can we have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Motion made by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed seven to zero. We are at the public input portion of our meeting. The import portion of tonight's agenda, as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than thirty minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward. For general public input, please note that the time is seven oh five. Welcome.
Bruce Danielson, Sioux Falls. I heard something last week as I finished my public input. More fabrication. More fabrication. Just what private citizens want to hear their elected officials accuse them of when they finish a presentation in front of this body. Last week, I mistook a voice for one of the council members up here, for another when I posted a video of the outburst. There had been, had been some shenanigans going on up here during our presentations and during the whole meeting, both at the council meeting and at the informational. I apologize for my mistake when I... But we... Citizens are offended by the lack of respect shown us by some of the members of this body. I put that voice on a video, and I apologize to that member. But I won't apologize to the other member. There's no excuse for anybody sitting up at this body to ever accuse anybody of fabrication, a citizen that comes up here. You don't treat us with respect. We had a member livestreaming her thoughts to a web blog instead of paying attention to the work at hand last Tuesday, making a big political statement about it. Many of us were offended by your attitudes, sir, and your exclaiming more fabrication. Let us know you have so little respect for this body and for this room, these people that come here, and there's going to be a lot coming here to speak tonight. Any of you that are going to be caught playing with your phones, doing anything, you can expect a three-twenty-one claim and probably an open records request coming from it. Because you shouldn't be doing anything but listening to us when we're up here, these people when they're up here, and the work that's in that agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, I'm John Cunningham, forty-nine oh four South Oxbo, Sioux Falls. I have heard persistent rumors that there is an effort going to come forward asking that organizations that do parades and other events in Sioux Falls be required to reimburse the city for the cost. That has not been done in the past, and I... There's some serious problems. The Saint Patrick's Day Parade, for example, all of the proceeds go to charity. And for them to reimburse the city for the, for the work that the city does is really taxing a charity for the, for the revenue for the city. And I think that's, that's problematic. And the other reason that you flatly rejected that in the past. I was here a year ago and pointed out that you donated thirty thousand dollars of security to the, to a political campaign, an action that's certainly unethical and either is illegal or should be. Contributing taxpayer dollars to a campaign is wrong. But you have said, and you had, I spoke to you on several occasions, and other citizens did, and you flatly rejected the idea of collecting from an organization for something that was bad for Sioux Falls. All of these things, the Saint Patrick's Parade, the Hot Lively Nights, all those things are good for Sioux Falls, and you want them to pay you. Meanwhile, an organization that took hundreds of thousands of dollars out of Sioux Falls, you flatly rejected the idea of collecting from them. Until you collect money from that campaign, I don't think you can seriously ask the citizens of Sioux Falls to support any action that would force charities and other good organizations to defray the cost of city government. So it's, even if you collect that money, because that was a bad, that was a bad thing for the city. It took hundreds of thousands of dollars out, money that could have been spent with our businesses in our community, making it stronger. And yet, you felt that you had to make that contribution. And now you say that you can't contribute to the charities that are benefiting from these events. I can't understand how you could come to that conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Greetings. I'm David Sokitis. Last week, I was here to talk about floods on a very local level, and we're getting to a same kind of idea, but on a bigger scale. That's tonight's topic. Historically speaking, rich people love to put houses in high-risk locations, riverfront, oceanfront. Well, I mean, that'd be all right if they bore the risks themselves, but oftentimes, government bails out the risks of those kind of building decisions, and I'm not really in favor of that kind of subsidy. Historically, not so much these days, but historically, the poor people got stuck building in swampy lowlands, and we're getting away from that, but that was a flood risk for the poor as opposed to the flood risk for the rich building on the sides of the ocean. The National Flood Insurance Act, I think we really need to phase that out as a nation. The problem is that it helps encourage risky construction. I mean, you build on the flood plain, build rents by an ocean, you get government subsidy for your flood insurance, and not the kind of construction we want to do, and not the kind of construction we want to subsidize. We should phase it out and get rid of it. Global warming is a big deal. It makes for more severe weather. Get this. Item number three there says that we get a five-hundred-year flood every four months in the USA. Kind of hard wrapping your head around that one. And there's the reference for that particular statistic. I think as a nation, we should reverse global warming via greener energy, try to absorb some of the carbon that's in the atmosphere, and try to cool down the earth with solar radiation management. We get floods from the Big Sioux River and Skunk Creek maybe once every five years. There's my source. Skunk Creek floods, what are we going to do about that? I think maybe we should put a new reservoir north of the city, or maybe a four-mile diversion canal to hook it up to the Big Sioux. Any spillway from that should be navigable to be safer for everybody. Diversion canal for the Big Sioux, we should make it bigger, safer, get rid of that big spillway. It's better for fishing people. Turn it into an ice park, tourist attraction. Lowhead dams, they got to go. They're a big risk. Cities buying some flooded properties. I think that's a really good idea. Keep it up. Make the world safer. And as always, we should try to enjoy what we have and live a happier life. And with that, good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Josh Kaiser. I talked to Mrs. Staley after last week's council meeting. I did get all that accomplished. The ticket was thrown out, no insurance ticket for sliding into the stop sign on Thirty-Fifth and Wayland Court on January fourth. So thank you, Ms. Staley, for all your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Brett Cruz. I was here last week. I forgot what I was going to talk about, and I talked about something else. But what I want to talk about is, like, I heard that Stanford people are here saying that they want to do the the new baseball field, you know, and I'm like, forget that idea. You guys, it's our baseball team, our baseball fields, you know? If we want to build something, we should put a vote for the people, not some guy that's screwing over people, saying like, taking their money and then putting it in his own. So, and, yeah, nothing, nothing good comes out of, dang, Stanford, anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Item twelve, a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by repealing the Orpheum Theater Advisory Board of Directors.
All right. Do we have anybody with staff here to speak to this tonight?
Actually, I am, I think.
Oh, Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During first reading, I talked a little bit about this, but basically, the Orpheum, now that it's being managed by the Washington Pavilion, has the ability, this is a group, this advisory board really isn't needed anymore. The Orpheum Advisory Board in the past has been comprised of nine members. It's now down to three members with term limits and people not being reappointed. There are three remaining people. They've been offered the ability to be part of the Washington Pavilion's advisory board. So really, this just cleans up a board that we don't intend on using anymore. The mayor isn't intending to appoint anyone else to the board. So to have a group that can't conduct business because they don't have a quorum anymore, and really, this allows these three people to continue to serve the city if they choose by being part of the Pavilion's group is really a great solution, and it cleans up a board and a group that we are no longer intending on using. So I would urge your support of this. It's, like I said last week, it's really kind of a cleanup measure to, for something that's not, or is no longer needed.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Starr, seconded by Staley. Any other discussion or debate? A roll call, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yeah.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirteen is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign a conditional gift agreement for donation of real property and approval of the real property being named the Scott Connolly Nature Area.
Welcome, Director Carney.
Good evening. City Councilmember Don Kearney with Parks and Recreation. This conditional Griffin agreement before you today involves the city receiving approximately three acres of property from the Wagner Arboretum Society. The property in question is the piece of property colored in red. This property's been identified in our arboretum master plan for acquisition, and it also happens to be adjacent to the Torverson property that's labeled there that we recently acquired last month. The condition on the proposed gift included being used for only Parks and Recreation purposes, and consistent with the arboretum master plan as amended from time to time. The proposed property would be named the Scott Connolly Nature Area. Funding for this gift was provided to the society by the Scott and the Connolly families, and we could certainly not be more appreciative than of their gift. It's been a great gift for the city. Due to the fact that the proposed name is after living donors, it does require unanimous approval of the city council, and the Parks and Recreation Board, the Parks and Recreation Board gave the unanimous approval at the December eighteenth Park Board meeting. And then I'll also note that the agreement also allows for the installation of a commemorative plaque, sign, or other agreeable recognition for the gift. The Arboretum Society is certainly supportive of this and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Director. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions? Counselor Staley?
Uh, excuse me. Just to clarify again for any people who might have tuned in tonight, we had a discussion on the first reading about the foundation structure that you said is going to be preserved, and also that this, there will be no pathways for automobiles through here.
Yeah, are you talking about the Torverson property? That's where the foundation is at.
The pathway that we just, that, I mean, we're going to continue, there's, there's some walkways in there. You don't have any plans to put a big, a big paved road in through there?
No, we do not.
Good. Then I just have one more question. We had a presentation at the four o'clock today where we had the parks planned, comprehensive, comprehensive plan, which the public will be hearing about, I'm sure, through the media. But we were talking about gifting for, for example, if someone wanted to give a monetary gift to help build a swimming pool. And that Counselor Erickson brought this up, that as council members, we can't go out and try to round up funds for that. Is this gifting agreement that we're talking about here, does that only apply to property? Or could that be also applied to financial gifts as well?
Certainly it could apply to property. It could apply for physical improvements to property. If somebody wanted to, perhaps, for example, the Baseball Association, a lot of times, will gift improvements to the baseball facilities. And I believe it could also include a cash gift as well.
Because what we were talking about earlier, just to, is that we were talking about outdoor swimming pools and that we're going to preserve the pools we already have, Frank Olson included. But we had the discussion about the need that we've heard, some of us have heard about a swimming pool in the south end of town, and specifically southwest is what I've heard. So that, that gifting thing could possibly be a factor in helping to jumpstart that. Right? As long as it's not the council, or apparently any of the mayor, like, you couldn't go out and ask people to donate to that fund. But people in that area of town certainly could start that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselors? Counselor Nitzer?
I do have a procedural question, but just to clarify for everyone in the public, counselors, officers, employees of the city, so that's the council, the mayor, employees, none of us can, can ask for a gift. But if somebody approaches the city and says, hey, I'd like to donate this piece of land, we can enter that discussion. We just can't be the solicitor at this point. So it can go in one direction, but not the other. My procedural question, and this is probably for the city attorney, is this requires unanimous consent? And I guess my question will be, does it need to be unanimous consent of the entire city council, eight members? Or is the members present sufficient? Is seven sufficient? I just want to make sure that we're doing it right.
It's of the members present tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselors? Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, Kylie.
Motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any further discussion? Okay, may I ask for a vote, please?
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item fourteen is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter one sixty zoning subchapter on-premise signs regulations. The planning commission recommends approval for the nothing.
Mr. Greco?
Good evening. Tom Greco, City Clerk. I just am approaching you with a sign ordinance that I've been working with planning on for about a month now, and I just want to provide some context, context as to why. If you might recall, back in November, I presented an update on the two thousand and twenty election to you, and one of the questions that came up was, can you talk about the sign ordinance? At the time, I couldn't, and was asked basically to come back and provide information about it. So as I started looking into it, I realized that it begged many more questions than it provided answers for. And I'll cover those over the course of the next couple of minutes here. But just kind of want to hedge it in that, so I did ultimately approach planning about an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to account for what I'm about to share with you. But I do want to start with what I have on the slide there, actually at the bottom, and just be clear that we're talking about non-commercial messages. As you may recall, back in May of two thousand and eighteen, the council adopted a, an ordinance, a change to the ordinances specifically with respect to signs, where we stopped classifying signs based on their content, and generally just grouped it into commercial and non-commercial messages. We didn't distinguish between religious signs, political signs, for-sale signs, things like that. We broke them down into two broad categories, and up there, we do basically say what a non-commercial message is. And among those, among that definition are political messages, for example, campaign, political campaign signs. But they also include other types of signs. Typically, you'll see folks will have a sign saying their child is on a certain team and in a certain school. That's one, that's covered under this ordinance. You may, may see a sign, a yard sign, saying, you know, a church service will be held at such a location on such a day. That is a non-commercial sign. So there's a variety of commercial signs, not just political signs. So I want to cover what the current ordinance says, and this is very important because when a lot of folks think about this, and I ran into this over the past couple of months, folks are still under the impression that we're under the sixty and seven model. What I mean by that is the old model that existed prior to May two thousand and eighteen. Under that model, our ordinance did specifically cite political campaign signs, and it said you may place campaign signs sixty days prior to an election, but they must be down seven days after the election. So what that meant is you had a hard, fast, and furious date as to when you can place them in the ground. Sixty days this year would be February fourteenth, and then there is also a set date as to when they should come down. However, again, if you recall the conversations back in two thousand and eighteen, the ordinance was changed to avoid regulating based on content. So what was arrived at in two thousand and eighteen is what you see up there, and I'll just highlight the key elements of it. First ones, there are not many changes, but generally what it does is it still keeps the sign size in residential parcels at nine square feet per sign, and in this case, as the ordinance currently stands, there's a limit of two non-commercial signs per yard. So that means you could have, say, one campaign sign and one sign that says your child plays for whatever team, or a religious sign. The other components here, it does talk about non-residential parcels, which really doesn't come into play with the amendment that we're going to discuss here. But that last sentence is the one that kind of had me scratching my head, and I foresaw some problems in terms of trying to explain it to people, and certainly, possibly with enforcement, which would be on planning side. But signs may just be displayed for up to sixty days per calendar year per property. So as I was thinking about how this would be explained to the council and to candidates and to property owners, it begs several questions, particularly in our case, and I'll start with the day, the day limit, and then do want to address the number of signs. So with the day limit, it does impact us. I will say, even though we got away from the sixty days prior, seven days after, folks still are used to putting signs up around sixty days prior. And for better or for worse, that does allow folks to get campaigning sooner. They can, you know, theoretically campaign during the petition period. By limiting it to ninety, to sixty days, one has to make a decision, and of course, you can go through and move signs, but one would have to make a decision if they don't want to go through with the sixty-day mark and move signs. They would have to make a decision as to whether or not they want to assume they would be in a runoff election. Because as you know, we've had a runoff provision in our ordinance since nineteen ninety-eight. That recently changed, and now it, it's, it's a little more stringent. We have a fifty percent majority rule for council members just as well. So in essence, what we're doing is forcing property owners, residential parcel, of residential parcels to make a decision as to when they may want to put out their support for a particular candidate or really for anything else within those non-commercial, within that non-commercial realm. So looking at it this year, if somebody was going to use the sixty days on the front end, front end of the election, the regular election, yes, they would start on February fourteenth if they so chose. However, on April fifteenth, actually on April fourteenth, sixty days, those signs would have to come down. And say somebody is in a runoff, that property owner would have to take down the sign that they had. would have to take down the sign that they had, and do with it whatever they would do with it. So I think that's problematic from a, from a couple of standpoints. The other way to look at that is if we would, if that person does plan on a runoff, that one property owner who wants to support a particular candidate would have to wait, say, until March 6th to be able to cover both elections, or thereabouts. So my point here is for, for ease, for the property owners, for political candidates, and just as a way of really explaining it to folks, too, because it will be on the property owner as to ensuring that they have it up for the, you know, no more than what will be proposed here is 90 days. So it is contingent upon the property owner to make sure that they're obviously following the ordinance. But I think this allows a little more flexibility, is easier to explain. And the other piece that goes along with this is taking off that restriction of two signs allowed in any residential, or any residential parcel. There could be a number there. The recommendation is, is no limit. That doesn't mean, you know, we're suggesting people should have 100 yard signs in their yard. But then again, in the past, we didn't have limits on certain yard signs anyway. The reason I think this one's important is not so much with a view toward our city elections, but say towards the primary elections, because there's always an overlap in time between the regular election for that matter, and certainly if we had a runoff, in terms of the number of days. And I think this, again, allows more flexibility for those property owners to provide, to put up the signs that they want to put up, you know, as part of the, the electoral process. So the proposal here, as I just mentioned, first, removing that two-sign limit, and then the other part is changing it to 90 days. And you may be asking, why 90 days? And the rationale is, what I came up with, again, we are still, we're not regulating based on content, but if this were to address political signs, 90 days would still allow folks to put it up generally, put signs up generally 60 days before our election. If there is a runoff, that's another 21 days. And then typically, we've given, well, we have given seven days to get them down. That's around 88 days, and I simply rounded it up to 90. But I think it would, it, I think this particular change would, would be useful, again, to the property owners looking to place the signs out that they want to place out, and making it less onerous on both candidates and property owners as time progresses. And so with that, I'll, I guess we'll do public input, and then I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Josh Kaiser. Does that consider for-sale signs? That, because my mother has her house up for sale, and it's been up for sale since right around the 15th of October. Does that consider in with that?
What? Okay, yeah, we'll address, we'll take questions first, and all the input, and then we'll answer the question. Okay. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else have questions on their input on the item? Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Laura Hubbell from Sioux Falls. I'm wondering if two signs is, is a limit, is kind of an infringement on free speech. I've knocked on lots of doors when I've been campaigning, and I've had my sign on their yard, but the husband wants his, his candidate's sign on the yard, and their adult son wants his candidate's sign on their yard. So that just is for one position. We'll be having in November, a whole ballot of, of people on the sign. So, so if they want, like, a sign for governor, or, that's not governor, but president, and for their, their local state, or state house, or state senate, that's three signs. And that's only, you know, for one, the person who wants it in the house. I, I can see this causing some problems in the House of only allowing two signs on the yard, especially if they have larger site, larger lots. And also, I'm a real estate agent also, and typically, listings are listed for six months, sometimes up to a year if it's a difficult property to sell. And so I'm also concerned about having a real estate sign up only for 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And John Cunningham, 4904 South Oxford. I have a practical question. What is the enforcement mechanism for the 90 days? A law that does, that can't be enforced is really not a law. Do you, I can't imagine policemen driving down the street writing down when a, when a sign was put in. If I put in a sign 90 days before the general election, who's to remember that I also had a sign 90 days before the primary, or, or a sign for something else? It seems like the whole 90-day thing is an unforceable, unenforceable thing, then probably is irrelevant. Thank you.
Appreciate the question. Anybody else?
Good evening. Thomas Warner. I find two areas of this problematic. Number one would be the for-sale signs, because to say that a house has to be sold within 90 days is probably not always realistic. The second also could be campaign-related, not so much from the city side, but from a state side. We have several districts that are going to be looking at primaries, and from primary to election date is well past 90 days. So rather than just focusing on a citywide campaign timeframe, a state could also be considered in that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move in, see if counselors have questions, and Tom can come in and maybe answer what we've gone on so far. Counselor Erickson?
Two things. The, if you read the ordinance, it says it's for non-commercial yard signs, so that does not apply to for-sale signs?
It does. And I asked, I do want to point out that I have, that Jason Bieber is also here, and he could address some of those planning specific questions.
Okay, I'd be curious about that. And then it, it does strike two yard signs, and so you can have a, a larger amount of yard signs in there. For example, I have owned rental property, and I put up yard signs for candidates all the time, and some of them are longer to where, excuse me, longer to where I can fit two of every candidate if I so choose. So that still allows that to happen to the general public, because it gets rid of that two yard signs. But I would be curious about the non-commercial as well.
Well, welcome, Jason.
Good evening. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. I will, let me do a little looking into the real estate sign. I'm not 100% sure if this, if it's under non-commercial, or if it's under commercial, so I will have that for you for second reading. The enforcement action question, it is difficult to enforce this ordinance the way it is. It will be difficult to enforce this ordinance the way it's going to be, if it's passed for 90, 60, 90, any kind of a day thing is difficult. It was a lot easier to enforce it prior to the Arizona free, you know, regulating content, because you could go out there eight days after an election. If there's a sign there, it's obviously a violation. You send them a letter. Now, what we would have to do is if we got a complaint that the sign's been up for more than 60 days, or 90 days if it passes, or whatever the, the day that we do, we'd have to go out there, take a picture, then come back, that same amount of time, again, take another picture, if it's still in the same place, then send them a letter. So it's difficult to enforce either way. It's kind of just what we have with that, that we can't regulate on content anymore, so.
So it's, it really falls on the honor system, too, and really, there's, there's sign fatigue in the community when there's elections, too. You know, putting it out early is not always a huge benefit to candidates. And so obviously, that's the choice of the candidate and their strategy of how they want to do it. But generally, people don't put it out 90 days in advance. But there can be those signs of, hey, my kid plays soccer, and I want to have that displayed, or, or whatever it may be, so.
And typically, in the past, more of our enforcement aspect of it has been safety reasons. If it's in the intersection safety zone, if it's in the right-of-way, if it becomes more of a hazard, then really cracking down on how many signs you have in your yard and, and things like that. If we get a complaint, obviously, in the past, we would have went out on that, but.
And those still get taken down and taken to the street.
Absolutely. Can't be in the right-of-way, they can't be in the intersection safety zone, they can't be in the driveway safety zone, so those are still part of it.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Staley?
What about the legislative timeframe? How does, Tom, maybe you can address that? Somebody running for an office in the primary, and then?
This, what this, what this will say is each sign may be on a property for up to 90 days.
Well, so if, if, if we're talking about the primaries, so, in June?
Right.
I'm, I'm wondering what Mr. Warner it is? Could you, could I, I just come up here for a minute, please? What timeframe are you referencing? Help, help me to know.
Primary is in June, and then the regular election will be in November. So you have approximately a five-month timeframe, and that would be with no lead time before the primary.
So you would be advocating that we, you get to leave the, if you've won the primary, that you get to leave it up until November?
Yes, ma'am.
Versus otherwise, you take it down in June?
That would be correct.
And then you put it back up?
Anybody not winning the primary would be subject to taking it down.
So how many days would that be? June, July, August? So five months?
Approximately, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Brecky?
I need remedial help. I'm having trouble understanding this. Does, does this, what happened in the election in Central District during the last runoff situation? In Central District, in the last election, we had a runoff. Didn't they just let the signs stay up?
This particular provision was not in effect. It was not effective for the last election. So the way the, the previous ordinance read was you may place it 60 days prior to the election, and then take them down seven days after the election. And presumably, that meant after, if you were in a runoff, after the runoff. And that's basically how it's been explained, and I think also enforced. So it was a different ordinance back then, even from 60 day, the previous slide I had up here. But essentially, they were allowed by ordinance last time to keep them up for up to 88 days, is what the man.
So I'm confused. So why wasn't that working? Why, why, why are we doing this? And does this allow them up longer? Because I think the public would like us to have them up as short of a time as possible.
And we, we, this was changed, the ordinance was changed to not identify and place specific requirements on political signs, per se. The same with religious signs, or ideological, or, you know, social signs. And that stemmed from a court case. We, we could provide you additional information, but that stemmed from a court case. It was bought before the council back in 2018, and the gist of it was that we could not regulate based on content. So we could not say political signs can be up for X number of days, while we said, you know, social or other types of non-commercial yard signs could be up for 40 days or 50 days. It had to be grouped into one. And as Jason mentioned before, it's based on a Supreme Court decision that was made several years ago. I believe it was Reed versus Gilbert. And that's where it came from. And I think, just looking around at other communities and putting this together, a lot of communities have already started, or have moved completely to essentially the model that we have, breaking down between commercial and non-commercial.
Is the net result of this, though, that the signs can be up, put up earlier and stay up longer?
No, I, no, I, I don't think so. This would allow it to be, you could have them up for 90 days. How one chooses to do that is really up to that property owner. They can choose to do it 90 days on the button from, you know, right before the regular election. But on election day, the 90th day, they would have to take those down. Or they can make a determination that they want to have possibly some overlap with, say, a runoff, in which case they would put them up a little later. But it's on, it's on the property owner. We, we no longer say they can be up, you know, 60, or 90, or whatever, choose your number, days before an election. It's 90 days per calendar year for property.
So the camp, so the candidates are going to have to try to guess whether or not they're going to be a runoff, or, and if they, if they choose wrong, then during the runoff, they've, they've either got to take their signs down, or be in violation of the, of the ordinance.
Right. And that's what I'm suggesting by changing from 60 to 90. To me, it takes the guesswork out of it. You still get approximately 60 days before an election, and then maybe you're not in a runoff, and you don't use your full 90 days. That's, that's how I view it. Obviously, we wouldn't tell people how to do it, but that, you know, would be a logical approach to take.
So am I correct? You're, you're trying to allow what we used to have, which is, they used to be able to be put up, and then they could stay there during the runoff. You're trying to?
That, that exists right now, except it's 60 days. You have less of a window to work with, minus the two-sign limit provision. But it, that's what the ordinance is right now, is it's 60 days. Whether they get out to 60 days, I chose 90 just because it, it seemed logical and it fit with what people were used to. And again, it's not just our elections, it's the primary and general election. And to me, that time period covered, you know, again, what folks are sort of accustomed to. This, I think, the 60 days, in hindsight, and I don't think, you know, I certainly didn't think of it back in 2018, in hindsight, that, that 60-day time period, I believe, is very restrictive. So.
Explain that. I'm, I'm sorry I'm asking so many questions, but I, I.
No. So take this year, for example, election's on April 14th. You, if, under this provision, you may decide to put, you know, to, you want to get all 60 days in front of, say, the regular election. You go out, you put your signs up on February 14th. On election day, 60 days from when you put them up, all those signs have to come down. Otherwise, they become in violation of the ordinance, because they will have been up more than 60 days. If you were thinking about it and wanted to make sure that you covered yourself for the runoff election, you would wait till, say, March 6th. I think that's the date. But you would wait till, say, March 6th, almost a full month later, to put your signs out, under the assumption that you may be in a runoff. You know, it's, it, right now, it's just a, a risk that candidates and property owners need to take. But that doesn't mean, you know, even now, it doesn't mean they can't go out, take it down after 60 days, and move it elsewhere. Under this provision, on the, the way the ordinance is written, people theoretically could have had political campaign signs up last year for 60 days per property. So I think this kind of gets away from a lot of the gaming of the system. It gives people a nice window on either side of the regular election, the runoff election, to do it in a way that makes sense, you know, for their neighbors and for themselves.
I'm still kind of confused, but, you know, I will pass it on to second read, and maybe I can talk to you later, and just make sure I'm, I'm clear on it. It, it is confusing to me. Thank you, though.
Counselor Kylie? Thank you. Basically, it just provides the candidate more flexibility.
And, well, ultimately, property owners, but candidates, too, obviously.
Right, right. Since the candidate ultimately, I guess, owns the sign, but the property owner, both of them have more flexibility that way. For one thing, in a city election, it's pretty tough to put a sign up in February, because it's, ground's frozen in the first place, unless you bring out your drill. You know, for, it's, and, and it makes more sense for the June, for our legislators, the June and the November elections, to split it up 45 days each. And it's going to be up to the, a property owner to take it down after the primary, store it in the garage, or whatever, and then put it back up prior to the general election. I mean, most property owners are going to be like me. You're not going to want to mow, mow around those signs that until your summer. You're going to take them down, put them back up prior to the general election. So I don't see that being an issue. Thanks.
Counselor Nitzer? So in, in the past, I've, I've read Reed versus Gilbert and some other decisions, having looked at things like murals and other sign issues. And I, I will tell you that I would encourage everybody, go find Reed versus Gilbert. And I, it, it's been a while, but as I recall, they had created a, a ordinance that regulated a specific type of sign, whether it was religious or something like that. And it, it was, and they were trying to target a proliferation of a certain type of sign. And essentially, what the Supreme Court said was, content-based distinctions are subject to strict scrutiny, which means they're presumed to be, essentially, they're presumed to be unconstitutional. If you have to look at the sign and read it, the content, it's probably unconstitutional. So that was why we tried to make it agnostic. It doesn't matter what the sign is. A sign is a sign is a sign. It all has the same regulations. And what they did say is that time, manner, place restrictions are allowable. So you can say how long they can be up, where they can be in the yard, how big they are. So you can say how long they can be up, where they can be in the yard, how big they are, that sort of thing. And so that's, we're trying to be agnostic. And in all, to be frank, it's made the regulation somewhat of a nightmare, as we've kind of found. Because it's making it very difficult to, how are we supposed to know when the sign goes up and goes down? So I think, I'm not sure there's a better answer to this, but at least it does take that whole guesswork out of the system of, do I have to gamble that, you know, does somebody have to gamble that they may have a runoff? And so there's not a great solution to this, but I think it would become more clear. Just go kind of read that. There's some great analysis online, too, of that particular case, so.
Counselor Staley?
Question for the last central election that we had, runoff with Zach DeBoer, Kurt Saleh. How many citations were given on that?
That I don't have. I don't have that information on me. I can, I can go through our records for that.
Is there a chance there was no citation?
I would say there's probably a good chance there wasn't any citations on those. Like I said, most of the time, our enforcement of campaign signs are usually, in the past, we've called that the candidate and tried to do a courtesy more than anything and asked them, hey, there's a sign here, can you get it moved? Or if it's in the right of way, or if it's in the intersection safety zone, then obviously, those are ones that we want to take care of right away, but.
Well, because I had the conversation with Tom yesterday, I believe. I said, how the heck are you going to enforce any of this? How are you going to mark who's got their sign up 60 days and then 30 days? And then maybe somebody's got it up for 90 days and then they didn't take it down? It's still kind of a, it's just, it's a, it's non-enforceable, really. But I'm also, I'm kind of curious about this, this primary thing with the general election in that, are we allowing them to, they can only have their signs up for 30 days to start with and then they can have it up for 60 days before the election? I got to see if that works out mathematically. There's a break in there, but maybe we should change this to like 120 days? So to allow them to have, well, 60 and 60? Or do they get 90 and 90 for each election?
Well, you would, I think the days, you're never going to cover anybody unless you just allow them all the time. I mean, you, you got to have it, in our opinion, you got to have some sort of a day timeline so people aren't abusing the intent of it. For the primary, they'd get 90 days for a primary sign. And then if they went to the election, they'd get another 90 days. It's per sign. So if it's a different sign, you get another 90 days. Not per election or per any of that stuff. It's per sign that you put out there.
All right. And so, and also, right now, like in the summertime, somebody could have their, their yard. If this passes, I mean, they could just have, for 90 days, have a bunch of political signs in their yard. Right?
For, but they could do that.
Anytime, anytime.
Right now, they could do two signs for 60 days, anytime they want.
Anytime, okay.
Yeah, correct. I mean, there could be, as we went through this, is, I think we've, me and Tom both kind of understood, two is probably not the right number. It's too low. But what's the right number? Is it five, but then people want to put more? It just becomes difficult either way.
Because I was under the impression in the past that I would use a yard sign and put like rummage sale on it, of a political sign, and that you better make sure that's covered up because you weren't supposed to have any political signs out if it wasn't political season.
But, and that was before an election because now you have 60 days to put them up whenever you want. The previous ordinance specifically had that word in it, there has to be an election. So if there's no election that year, you can't have a political sign up because it's 60 days from, there's no election.
And now you can.
So that we could enforce it. And now you could put them up, but you can do that now. Tom and myself, looking at this, we're just trying to say 90 probably makes more sense. It's not going to cover everybody, but maybe it covers a little bit. And the two signs we were concerned about, I mean, if you have a mayor, you have a school board, you have three council races, some people may want to put one of each of them on there. So the number is a little more difficult, but that one's kind of, that, it's just tough. It is tough. It's tough to enforce. That's kind of what we're dealt with right now, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Naitzer? I'll keep this quick because I'm sure the audience is finding this riveting. So the new, this new ordinance about the 60 days a calendar year, that was in effect after the 2018 election, correct? Before, it was 60 days and seven, so they didn't have to worry about the whole?
Right.
They didn't have to do the calculus.
For the city elections in 2018.
20 will be the first time somebody has to deal with. Just last thing, covering the primary thing. So somebody puts a sign out for the primary, they pull it out in June, they put it in their garage, they bring it back out in August and put it back in. You count that as a new sign? Even though, I mean, physically, it's the same sign, but it's a new sign. That be correct? And the clock restarts for another 90 days?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it really only is an issue if you leave it out in the summer and then you leave it all summer. But if you pull it down for a month, put it back in, you got another 90 days. So this may take care of that problem.
Okay. Well, good questions and discussion against a first reading. So we've got another week to look through some of these. Looks like we've still got some questions. Can I get a motion to set a date for second reading for Tuesday, January 21st?
Moved to approve.
Second, Erickson.
Moved to approve by Kiley, seconded by Erickson. Any more discussion? Can I get a vote, please?
Council members Naitzer?
Yes.
Zelberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Kiley?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 15, a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, consenting to resettlement of refugees in the City of Sioux Falls as part of the U.S. Refugee Admissions Program.
Yes, come on up. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and those of you in the audience. Betty Oldenkamp, I am the CEO for Lutheran Social Services. I am here tonight to be able to provide you with some introductory comments in regard to this resolution. And then we do have a slide deck that we will walk through that provides an overview of the resettlement process. So I come before you this evening to request that the Sioux Falls City Council provide written consent to continue initial refugee resettlement in Sioux Falls. It's LSS that's bringing this request as we are the designated agency for resettlement in South Dakota. LSS has served in this capacity since 2000, when the state of South Dakota made the decision to transfer the administrative and direct service responsibilities for refugee resettlement to LSS. In addition to the reference documents that we've provided in advance of tonight's meeting, I want to talk a little bit about the executive order and then we will walk through LSS's role in resettlement. So prior to the start of the federal fiscal year, which is October 1st, the President of the United States determines a cap or ceiling for the number of refugee arrivals that can enter the U.S. during the upcoming federal fiscal year. So this is also often referred to as the presidential determination. At the end of September 2019, President Trump set the presidential determination at 18,000 for federal fiscal year 2020. That's 18,000 across the United States. That's a 40% reduction from the level for federal fiscal year 19, which was 30,000. This year, in addition to that presidential determination, President Trump also issued Executive Order 13888 on enhancing state and local involvement in refugee resettlement. This executive order introduced a new requirement for both states and localities to consent to refugee resettlement in order for initial resettlement to continue. As this new requirement has rolled out, the timeline for obtaining consent, you've heard probably different dates tossed about in the news. Right now, we have to have consent in place by May 31st of 2020. The early guidance that we had received on determining what local government entity was to provide consent, it appeared that would be at the discretion of the resettlement agency, which for South Dakota is LSS. So as this was, as we were looking through the executive order, we determined that since Sioux Falls is our primary site for initial resettlement, we would start our work with Mayor Tenhaiken. We met with him in November to advise him of the executive order and the impending need to get consent. We had also gone to Governor Noem for the state-level consent that's required with this. It was mid-December when some additional guidance came out from the Department of State. And that indicated that they were looking more at county government level in terms of providing that consent. And it was at that point, it was about the same time that Governor Noem gave her consent. And so then we did approach the Minnehaha County Commission regarding consent as well. At this time, the final federal regulations have not been promulgated. And so we made the decision that we were going to proceed at the city level as well as at the county level because we're uncertain as to what the final rule may be as to which locality supersedes in terms of providing consent. So I know there've been a couple of questions throughout the day as, why were we going to both bodies? And that's because we're not certain of what the final requirement will be for this. The other question that has come up, as I have had conversations with several of the members here of the council, is regarding the number of refugee arrivals that we might expect to arrive into Sioux Falls and whether or not a ceiling or a cap could be established for Sioux Falls. The written guidance that we have received is actually located within the Notice of Funding Opportunity. This is from the Department of State, so it is the funding that supports that initial arrival of refugees. The guidance specifically states, for each locality, provide a letter of consent from the chief executive officer of the local government, and then in parons, it says county or county equivalent. The letter must convey the local government's unambiguous and unconditional consent to accept the initial resettlement of any refugee in that locality in fiscal year 2020. So as I've indicated, this is a new requirement. There's no precedent as what might be interpreted as a condition. What we have been talking with folks about is that our projection for the number of refugee initial arrivals for fiscal year 2020 is between 60 and 100. Our arrival numbers for FY 19 were 130. You think about a 40% reduction in that. And so that's where we're gauging that arrival number at 60 to 100. Tonight, I make to you my commitment that we, I will come before you, whether you want a written report, a presentation back to the, to you as members of the council at any interval you want. If you want an update on a quarterly basis, if you just want to know when we hit 50, when we hit 60, when we hit 75 arrivals, we will provide that to you. We, as I've indicated, we think that number is 60 to 100. Given the overall ceiling of 18,000, it's highly unlikely it would exceed that. But I want you to know that our commitment is to be transparent with you and to share with you what that number is on a year-to-date basis as we move forward. And if, you know, concerns arise, we would address those to the best of our ability, so. The other thing I want to touch briefly on before we move into the rest of the presentation is just the, the funding for resettlement services. This is primarily funded through grants with the federal government. For the most part, those are grants direct from federal agencies to LSS. And that is because of that designation that we have with the state, through the state of South Dakota. The exception to that is there are some funds that go to the State Department of Labor and then pass through to LSS for the English as a Second Language classes. So we currently have no city funding to support these services. And for us, you'll sometimes hear that we make a lot of money off of this service. That is not the case. Resettlement Services is a loss leader. The federal funds that we receive don't fully cover the cost to deliver this program. And they put limitations on the funds that can be utilized for administrative costs. We are a social ministry. We do this work because it's what we're called to do. It's integral to our Lutheran heritage and to our calling to love and serve our neighbors. And so with that, I'm going to have Rebecca introduce herself and walk through the slide presentation.
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Rebecca Kiso Knutson. I'm the Vice President of Community Services for Lutheran Social Services. I'm going to back up a little bit and try to set some framework that I hope will help us structure the discussion tonight. We know there's a lot of national discussion relative to immigration in our country. And so tonight, I just want to make sure that we're clear on who we're actually talking about when we talk about refugees. So we always start the conversation by saying, all refugees are immigrants, but not all immigrants are refugees. So there's an international definition of what a refugee is. A refugee is an individual who has a well-founded fear of persecution due to the reasons of race, religion, nationality, or membership in a particular social group or political opinion. So it's a very specific and narrow category of individuals that we're talking about. All refugees who are approved for resettlement in the United States have legal status upon arrival. And then, because there's been discussion about this today, too, after a year of residing in the United States, they're able to apply for legal permanent residency status. And after five years, they're able to apply for citizenship. And every year, LSS operates citizenship classes that are building at the campus on East Bank. We have about 100 individuals who naturalize through those classes and through that assistance that they're provided. One other term that's important when we have this conversation is the term secondary migrant. A secondary migrant is a refugee who arrives in one state in our country. Once they arrive, they have the ability to travel throughout the country as they would like. So an individual who arrives, for example, in Minnesota and then decides, because they have family in South Dakota, to move to South Dakota, is a secondary migrant, as long as they're under five years from that date of arrival. I also think it's very important to note, no one makes a decision to become a refugee. Refugees are individuals who are forced to flee their home country because of significant conflict that exists and, as I said earlier, a well-founded fear. Typically, refugees will flee their home country and arrive in a second country. There, they will be in a refugee camp that's administered by the United Nations High Council on Refugees. We see a wide range of the number of years that individuals may end up in that refugee camp. Might be as low as three years, could be as high as 25 or more years. So there's a wide range. And really, the reason for that is the bulk of individuals who are displaced from their home country are intending to return home when the conflict subsides. So right now, our estimates are that there are approximately 26 million refugees who have been displaced from their home country as a result of global conflicts. And fewer than 1% of them will ever end up being resettled into a country like the United States. It's also important to note that the United States is not the only country that does refugee resettlement. We're one of 30 nations that participates in that program. We get a lot of questions about the vetting process or the screening process that happens for refugee arrivals. This is not something that is our responsibility as LSS. We'll talk about what our role is in this. But I can provide you a high-level understanding of how that screening process works. So once a refugee applies for resettlement with UNHCR, then they would be designated potentially for resettlement in the United States. That's when the screening or vetting process would begin. This process is overseen by our Department of Homeland Security, FBI, CIA, and State Department. So all of them are involved in that process. It is a multi-layered process that includes interviews, biometric security checks. They're using databases to check people and involves health screenings. And historically, what we've seen is that process takes between 18 months to two years to complete. So it's not something that happens quickly. It's also said that refugees are the highest screened and most vetted category of entrance into the United States because that process is so thorough. The process is reviewed at that federal level because the federal government is wanting to ensure that individuals who are resettled into the U.S. are who they say they are and are here for good purposes. So that process is reviewed. The most recent review of that process happened in 2017 and there are changes that are continually made to try to strengthen that process. As Betty talked about, really, resettlement starts with that presidential determination. So the U.S. President is able to decide what that cap is on the number of arrivals into the U.S. The structure for this program historically has been then that the State Department will work with nine National Voluntary Agents. work with nine national voluntary agencies. Those voluntary agencies are private entities who are involved in helping with that resettlement process. We are a subcontractee of Lutheran Immigration and Refugee Services. It's also important to note that we are not affiliated with them corporately. We subcontract with them. LSS of South Dakota is incorporated here locally as a standalone organization. The resettlement program is an early self-sufficiency program. So for our team, the challenge is we have, from the time of arrival, eight months to get individuals working and self-sufficient. And so that's the challenge before us. That's the eight-month timeframe is when that federal assistance will end to help support that initial resettlement period. And as Betty mentioned, the funding for that initial eight-month timeframe comes at the federal level. One thing that I think is also important to note is this program, historically, and even more so in recent years, is a family reunification program, which means most new arrivals who are coming are rejoining family members who they've been separated from as a result of the conflicts. Now, we talk about this executive order being new, but we don't feel that local consultation is new. As an agency, we have taken the philosophy to be as transparent as possible with this program and in dialogue with our local stakeholders about how refugee resettlement is operating. So historically, every year, we're preparing an abstract. That abstract includes information on the success of our resettlement program. So it has demographic information about how our job placements are going, what our housing environment's like, what are the local economic conditions. And in that, we're articulating what we believe our local capacity is to accept new refugee arrivals. We take that abstract process, or abstract, and you have an advisory board that's comprised of local stakeholders. So that's school representatives, law enforcement, public health, social services, and both city and state government, as well as county government. That group meets monthly, and again, they're looking at the abstract, but then they're meeting every month. So if there are issues that are percolating to the surface related to resettlement, we're working as a team to try to address any issues that might come up. More context, this is a look back on resettlement. So this first slide that you're looking at is showing you the number of refugee arrivals in the U.S. So these are actual arrivals, not the presidential determination. In some years, it's the same, but this would be throughout the United States as a whole. And what you can see is that in the last three years, we've seen a decrease in the number of arrivals at that federal level. Similarly, when you look at the numbers of arrivals into South Dakota, we've seen a decrease. And so there's that connection that Betty talked about earlier, related to that presidential determination and what the number of arrivals are federally and what we would expect to see in South Dakota. So in fiscal year 2019, there were 130 arrivals into the state of South Dakota. Betty alluded to this. There are a number of complex structures associated with resettlement. In different states, this looks differently. The structure that Betty talked about is a replacement designees status, which is basically when a private entity like Lutheran Social Services has responsibility and primary oversight for resettlement activities. We feel there's an advantage here, and the advantage that we see is that because we're the Silver Settlement Agency, it's really a one-stop shop for people, and we feel like people are less likely to fall through the cracks, and we can attend to their needs. So our primary office is here in Sioux Falls. We have seen some arrivals into the communities of Aberdeen and Huron, and so we do have staff support in both of those communities as well. Our role in this process is integration and that early self-sufficiency. So that happens in a couple of phases. That initial 90-day timeframe, which is that timeframe that's covered by State Department funding, when we're really just starting to hit the ground with individuals and families to help get them successful. We're working on a family self-sufficiency plan. We're helping identify housing. We're ensuring that their housing is equipped with all of the basic furnishings that one would expect a home to have. There are very extensive checklists that we have to follow that are provided at the federal level to ensure that we're providing adequate household items. We're helping the family members complete any immunizations and health screenings that need to be done, helping with school enrollment when there are individuals who are under the age of 18. We do a new arrival orientation, which is a 36-hour curriculum that basically takes everything from housing in the United States to parenting, working with law enforcement. We have folks coming in from the community to do presentations with new arrivals to help orient them to the community. Attendance at those orientations is an expectation and a condition of that continued federal Another key part of what makes integration successful is English language acquisition, and so we have a really phenomenal team of educators who are helping to assess English language capacity and providing classes that are tailored to where individuals are arriving. A common misperception and something that you might hear people say is that we only work with them for 90 days and then they're on their own. Because of that replacement designees status, LSS is involved with individuals for up to five years. So we get them up and running. If two years into their resettlement process, a new challenge emerges, our team is able to circle back around that individual and help provide assistance to get them back on track. Data is a big part of what we do at LSS as a whole and as well as a part of our accountability to the federal government. So these stats are stats that we are required as a part of our federal funding to maintain and track. So for fiscal year 19, 91% of individuals who are newly arrived into the state of South Dakota were within self-sufficient households within eight months. Our average starting wage was $1,286 an hour. 98% of those individuals who arrived had access to benefits, and 94% of those who secured employment kept their employment for a minimum of 90 days. Another common question that people have is about the economic impact related to resettlement. This is obviously a bigger question than a social service organization like LSS of South Dakota is able to handle, but we have gathered some statistics from publications that have happened nationally. And so what we know is that over the long term, we're making an initial investment in public resources and refugees, but the longer individuals are in country, the more they're contributing back to our economy. So over a period of 10 years or more, we see that balance shift, and they're contributing more than what they've received in assistance to get going. We also see high entrepreneurship among refugee populations and high homeownership rates after 10 years in country. We experienced this locally, but employers are very happy to hire refugees. They find them to be a great workforce contribution, and you may hear others talk about that tonight. And for a state like South Dakota with an unemployment rate as low as it is, refugees can help fill that gap. I'm not going to go into a whole lot on this because Betty covered the consent process in her introduction, but I do want to talk a little about projections for federal fiscal year 20. As Betty said, 18,000 is the presidential determination. We're expecting between 60 and 100 arrivals. Just today, we received guidance from the federal government. We've had since October 1st, which is the start of federal fiscal year 20, we've had 19 arrivals. And the guidance that we've received is that through May 31st, we would expect an additional 31, so approximately 50 arrivals is where we're at. And the population groups, over time, these population groups shift because the global conflicts shift, and so the population of refugees internationally shifts, so our arrivals locally shift. But if you look at the last year, these are the top four ethnicities that we've worked with: Eritrean, Ukrainian, Congolese, and Burmese.
Okay, thank you. Is that it for the presentation? Okay. Before we move into public input, I know we've got a lot of people here to speak on this, and we welcome your input. We're really glad you're here, and we're happy to hear from each of you. We just ask that, as we have a number of you here, just probably do your best, keep the dialogue as respectful as possible, and please try to, you know, stay on point with regards to the resolution at hand, and we'll just keep things moving on through. But welcome and get it started. Hello.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is McDad Mustafa. I've been resident here in Sioux Falls for 20 years. Thanks to LSS, they helped us, you know, come in here. When we moved over here, my father at the time, you know, it was a big political, was a different country at the time, Yemen, actually. He was practicing his politics out there and was actually in the process of being extradited back to his home country for execution without due process, without anything. That's when the UN stepped in and was able to take us out of there, and we didn't even get to pick what, we were just able to pick a region at the time of where we could be. So a lot of these guys who come in here don't get much of picking where they're going to come. Besides that, my father at the time was an accountant for a big, major company. My mother was the vice president of an international bank. Moving over here, within less than six months, my father picked the first job at Gateway, was on it until they closed down, went to John Morrell until he passed away, God bless him. My mother works at Citibank, nowhere near anywhere of her education or her experience. But it wasn't about what kind of life we're going to get. It's about just having a life. You know, as a 13-year-old, I could have drove my own car at the time before coming here. But I came here for the American dream as just an opportunity to live. After being here after high school, I joined the Marines. Went deployed to Iraq, Afghanistan. After four years, I left for family complications of my father passing away. Been here since, went to, I'm a construction manager now, I work for a local company here in Sioux Falls. Point I'm trying to say is, no matter what we put into it, these refugees, when we come here, we're just looking for life. Simple. That's it. And I hope you all can see that and allow this to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
All right. My name is Clara Hart. I live at 4906 Kalan Place. I forget my house number sometimes. I came to South Dakota in 1989, but prior to that, I left my birth country of Mozambique at the age of eight. That is, was during the colonial era. As you know, most African countries in the '60s were under colonialism, either by British, Portuguese, Spanish, Spaniards, even Germans. So I have, after living in exile in Tanzania refugee camps and Kenya, we didn't live in refugee camps, we lived in flats, you call them apartments, for 20 years, waiting and hoping to go back home. That was the plan. So my birth country became independent in 1975. You can imagine how happy I was. I was so glad to finally get to go back to my own country. My parents gave away everything. After one week, we were told, well, the government that was given in charge of ruling the country were Marxists who were being supported by Russians or members of the GDR, that is East Germany and China. And those were now the same philosophies that my parents aspired. So here again came refugees, part two. So after we had given everything away, you couldn't go back and ask people, give me back my teapot. It was hard. I did not know the word depression. I got depressed because I felt useless. I felt so sorry for my parents. Those were teachers back in my home country, but to see them having no purpose in life, they were lost. As an older daughter, it hurt me. As I said, I was depressed. So another 10 years there, I decided to go to other countries, maybe where I could find employment. Nothing. So in 1987, I was given an opportunity to apply for resettlement, to come to the United States. I did apply, and it took almost a year before I was resettled. And in 1988, May 20th, I finally flew from JFK, that is Jomakanyata Airport in Kenya, to San Diego. After one year in San Diego, I decided to come to the warm state of South Dakota. So I've been here since 1989. So as a mother of two daughters, little daughters, those were my hopes. I never wanted my daughters to go through what I went through. They still don't understand, but it's not something that I want to share with them. But once I got here, I had three goals. Wanted my kids to be safe and attend school, and they were never going to have food insecurity, but most of all, they would study. I wouldn't have to worry. And for me, I also had my own goal. Even though I had degrees from Kenya, they didn't apply here, so I had to go back to school at Augustana College, enrolled in social work. So my main goal was to have the right to vote, and it makes me upset when people say, "Oh, I don't have to vote, there's nothing there." To me, that is personal. My dad passed away in Kenya. Yes. He passed away in Kenya, not knowing what it feels like to vote. So that is my duty. Every time there's an election, I go to vote in his honor. You allowed me here in South Dakota. You accepted me. Please, accept other refugees like me. Thank you.
Just a reminder, folks, everybody has five minutes, and we are going to be pretty firm with the time limit. My fault, didn't have that on. Everybody has five minutes to speak, so we are going to be pretty firm with the time limit tonight with the number of people. So thank you, welcome.
City Council, my name is Chofiana Babaker, and I'm a student at Augustiana University and a proud resident of Sioux Falls. When I was nine years old, living in Sulaymani, Iraq, I woke up to the sound of my mother packing my favorite stuffed animal into a bag. The next day, we found ourselves in Turkey, begging at the doorsteps of the United Nations, hoping to find a new place to call home. In the four years we resided in Turkey, we faced homelessness, discrimination, and prejudice. My father was denied a job, my mother was ill and pregnant, and some days, we did not have food to eat. I didn't understand why people treated us in this way until one day I came home with bruises, and my mother explained to me why the kids at school were mean to me. She said, "Ema kurding gulakam," which translates to "We are Kurds, my flower." The Kurdish people are a stateless nation divided over regions in Turkey, Iraq, Iran, Syria, one of the biggest nations without a place or a land to call home. In 2012, after years of waiting in Turkey, the United States was the first country to approve our resettlement. I still have a diary entry from when I was 13 years old at the time, reading, "I can't believe I'm going to America. This is like a dream." Upon arrival, the community of Sioux Falls, especially LSS, welcomed my family and I with open arms, giving a place we can call home. The culture, language, and customs were overwhelming at first, but the love and support of the community was exceptional to our transition and integration process. Over the course of my life, I have been part of several communities that have been temporary homes to me as a refugee. But I have never known any other place besides Sioux Falls, South Dakota, where I have felt a sense of belonging, a sense of support, and a sense of unity. When I received my citizenship in 2015, I knew that after years of displacement, poverty, and persecution, I was finally lucky enough to call the Sioux Falls community a family. And like many children around the world, I've had the privilege to get an education. As a government and international affairs major, I want to give back to this country by eventually working for the U.S. and utilize my language skills to better serve both the American people and my newfound home. I am constantly inspired by refugee friends, community members, who contribute to our community through new businesses, activism, hard work, education... who contribute to our community through new businesses, activism, hard work, education and cultural, colorful, cultural festivities, making our community already great and on a path for growth. I am here today to request that you vote yes to consenting to refugee resettlement, following the example of the county commissioners. And remind the Sioux Falls community about the values generosity and kindness of all Sioux Falls residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, my name is Cham Phan. I have a studio that way on Main and I live on Main. And, um, you know, on a day-to-day basis, I get to help small businesses in Sioux Falls. I also get to help large businesses. I've been able to work with the highest grossing businesses in our state. I'm really proud of this fact. But that was in my heyday. These days, I just have a podcast. And I'm not gonna say it's important or anything, but the Mayor Paul, he was, he made it to my podcast and he didn't make it tonight, so. Take that into consideration. You know, uh, in all hon- in all honesty though, uh, none of this would be possible. I wouldn't be able to live my American dream if in ninety-two, L S S didn't help us resettle here. And, um, so yeah, I'm just really grateful, I wanna keep this short. Sioux Falls has always been my home. I love this place and I just hope you guys vote yes to consent to refugee resettlement because I think it's my time to help the next generation of refugees.
Thank you.
David Sokitis here and I accessed my cellphone and maybe I shouldn't, but once in a while it's useful. And I found a quote, I think that everybody is familiar with, so I gotta read it to you. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses, yearning to be, yearning to breathe free. The wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, the tempest tossed to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. I'm glad that there are still some people that remember that that applies to this country.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, um, my name is Regina Adack.
Let's start you a little bit, there you go.
Can you guys hear me now? Okay, good. My name is Regina Adack. I am a mother of three, full-time student and work at the courthouse as an interpreter, the hospital and everything in between. I, when someone asks me, I guess the next question is where am I from? When someone asks me where I'm from, I tend to pause because that question is a bit hard for me to answer without telling my story. I was born in Sudan, but during that time, it was one big country. But in two thousand eleven, it was split into two countries due to the civil war. My parents, on the other hand, are from a B A, which is either North Sudan or South Sudan. It's stuck in the middle right now, going through crisis, which is a story for another day to tell. My family immigrated from Sudan to Egypt to flee from the civil war that was going on in Sudan. We resettled in Dallas, Texas, which is where I grew up. I moved to Sioux Falls, South Dakota about five years ago to pursue my dreams in seeking a higher education. Living in Sioux Falls has definitely been difficult for me as a black woman, it's been a struggle. But it also has been one of my greatest blessings because in Sioux Falls, I was able to find a community who encouraged me, uplifted me and stood by me and encouraged me in my lowest moment when I wanted to give up, which I knew that wasn't an option. Because for me, where I came from, it is a privilege to be able to seek a higher education and live my dreams. Not every woman in my country where I came from had that opportunity. And I wanted to be the voice for the voiceless. I guess what I'm trying to say is, before you take that vote tonight, I encourage you all to look at me as a refugee woman and know that beneath me and each refugee that's in here today is a decent human being who's seeking to live a life in love, peace, abundance and walk in their purpose and seek their higher dreams. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello.
Good evening, council members. My name is Suliman Diba, I am twenty-four years old. A first-generation college graduate from Augustana University, two thousand seventeen. I am a U, U S citizen and the president and co-founder of a local nonprofit, fiscally sponsored by Sioux Falls Art Council by the name of Owl Growth Project. The mission of Owl Growth Project, we focus on the underserved and underprivileged youth in the city who may not have a safe haven or safe space to go to, to be comfortable in a community environment, as well as showcase their talents and their arts and blossom in that field and be supported. We focus on education, art and entertainment. And we've been in operation for the past three years since October of two thousand sixteen. This past year, October twenty nineteen, twenty, the twenty-first of October, actually, we were recognized by the city for our due diligence and our service to the members of our community and actually had a day proclamated to us, October twenty-first, which is officially Owl Growth Project Day. So, um, this October, come and celebrate with us if you're free. My refugee story starts in a country in northwestern Africa called the Gambia. Um, I'm the son of Muslim parents and the youngest of twelve, so anybody who has a family of brothers and sisters know there's a lot of fighting. Um, I took a lot of cold showers in the mornings because I was the last one to, to get in there. But my family came here when I was just three years old through L S S. There was a military coup in my country and my father was arrested and imprisoned for eighteen months for no reason other than being a human. And, uh, I'm the son of a father who was a teacher of twenty years and a mother who was illiterate and has not even a kindergarten education. And she actually paid all my college, she worked at Smithfield for twenty years and paid every single cent of my college until I graduated. And she became a citizen in two thousand seventeen and returned back home. I love my city because when we came here, L S S introduced us to many different refugee members in the community from Ethiopian, Sudanese, Arabic, uh, Bosnian, whatever you can name. They gave us a place in a community to call home, someplace we could be comfortable, people we can go to and be familiar with because they came through a similar struggle as we did. A lot of people tend to overlook the togetherness of the refugee community, the generosity, the family environment. When I was just six years old, I lost my eldest brother to a car accident, our second year here in America. The first people to reach out to us, the first people to provide financial assistance, emotional support, rides to services, um, and just being there for us as a family was the refugee community. Also the Sioux Falls community as well. But I just want people to know that without L S S, without the beautiful people in the Sioux Falls community, without the refugees who had the heart to take us in as a family, I wouldn't be up here today fighting for these same people. I wouldn't be up here today as a founder of a nonprofit. I wouldn't be up here today as a college graduate. So I just want you all as council members and everybody in this room to really dig deep in your hearts and realize that we all have the same dream to make our families safe, to create a legacy for our families and to be contributing members to our society and our country. So I ask you to please vote yes in consenting to refugee resettlement in the city and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, council people, for allowing me to speak. I am Pastor David Bacon, a resident of Sioux Falls. Two quick points. One is personally, I have worked with people from Laos, Somalia, Sudan and Liberia. They have been Muslim, Buddhist and Christian. And I have found them to be respectful, hardworking and willing to seek to follow the model of good American citizens. Secondly, I know there was a second point. I believe that what Rebecca from L S S said about the vetting process of the United States government is very thorough. And therefore, I urge you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening, let me lower these, there you go. Good evening, council members, my name is Taniza Islam. Um, I am an immigration attorney as well as a co-founder of a nonprofit organization, South Dakota Voices for Justice, where we advocate for immigrant refugees and Muslims in South Dakota. I am so inspired by the generation of refugees that we just heard from. This is our future and our future is so bright. I just wanted to mention that it's really important to understand that there is an executive order in place that has specific guidance and with the gratitude to L S S and Betty and Rebecca and their explanation. It's really important, I think, to understand that there can be no conditions placed on this consent. Thank you for putting together the resolution that is in front of us today. I urge you to vote yes without any condition. So for example, if there is a number put on how many refugees you would like to see into the exact consent, you may risk, um, losing that consent to be recognized by the Department of State. Similarly, you could not put a condition on who you would like to see here. For example, only people from Chile or Venezuela. I don't know if it's appropriate or allowable, but I do have the Department of State's guidance on what the consent decree needs to look like. Should I just set it here or?
Yeah, we can have somebody pass it around.
Yeah, so it is from the Department of State and again, if there's any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, my name is Desiree Jansen and I am a business owner here in Sioux Falls. I develop new products for my industry and I educate new people in my field and provide them a way to begin their own businesses as well. I've learned many lessons through my current career, but none of those lessons are as valuable as the ones that have been taught to me by my experiences with immigrants and refugees. After college, I began working in human resources at John Morrell. Um, I find it extremely important for me to share the experiences that I've had with immigrants and refugees while working there. While at John Morrell, I spearheaded an international recruiting project that brought in hundreds of people from around the world on short-term visas to get them, to get us through the busy season. I was there every step of the way for these people from obtaining the visa, setting up apartments, furnishing those apartments, setting up transportation to and from work and going over general cultural-specific information to adapt to Sioux Falls, in Sioux Falls successfully and quickly. To say that I got to know these people well is an understatement. I also worked very closely with Lutheran Social Services and got to know, you know, the work that they provide, uh, which is exceptional. They go above and beyond, um, to get people acclimated here. After leaving John Morrell, I worked as an E L L or English Language Learner Liaison for the Sioux Falls School District. I was responsible for helping all the families that spoke English as a second language at Hawthorne Elementary School to get them through the year smoothly by working as a bridge between the teacher and the parents. My fondest memories and most valuable lessons and experiences were the ones with the refugee and immigrant families I met through these positions I held. I have many refugee and immigrant families that are close enough to be considered my own now. I cannot begin to explain how greatly my life has been blessed by them and I can only hope to be the same for them. You don't know true hospitality until you have been welcomed into the home of an immigrant family. These are people with stories much harder than our own, in most cases, as you know. Their will to do well, succeed, acclimate and just be able to provide stability for their family is admirable. I know because I've witnessed it exactly five hundred and nine times. That's the number of individuals I have directly worked with and gotten to know over the years, five hundred and nine. I know the heart of who would be coming to our city and I know we would all be better for welcoming them in with open arms, open, open minds and open hearts. Resettling refugees is hard work, but so is everything that is worth fighting for, so thank you for voting yes on this.
Thank you. Hello there.
First of all, I wanna thank you all, city council. I'm gonna introduce myself as a proud Muslim Kurdish American citizen in the city of Sioux Falls. I arrived to Sioux Falls in nineteen seventy-seven. When I arrived to Sioux Falls, I didn't have a glasses, I didn't have a bald headed, I didn't have a back problem, I have all three of them right now. Welcome to the water of South Dakota. I am very proud that everybody spoke today. I have a different perspective to bring to your attention and I hope this morning's meeting and today's meeting to make a better differences in the life of the refugee immigrant in our community. As a humble board member at Chamber of Commerce for ten years and twenty years as a city human relations commissioner and involved more than twenty organizations as a board member, I learned so many times as a city of Sioux Falls, we just wanna be nice and talk positively. But sometime if we not target some of the challenges we have in city of Sioux Falls, we not gonna help anybody and we not gonna fix anything. And we not should be politically correct all the time to bring in fact out to our community. I am honored and humbled to know every refugee in this city and I strongly can say I've been known by sixty-five percent or more of refugees in city of Sioux Falls because I created organization called, used to be called multicultural center, was a home for many refugee immigrant. When something they needed, they can come knock my office and follow up and get them through the problem. But sadly, with the political dirtiness of some people in this city, I did not put my head down to say, yes ma'am, yes sir. I've been left that organization and that door is closed to help so many refugee immigrant in city of Sioux Falls. We have some challenges with the refugee immigrant, nobody wanna talk about it. I strongly proudly to say ninety percent are refugee immigrant and respected member in our community. They are hard-working people, they respect each other and they wanna be part of the dream of this country we live in. Okay? We have so many refugee come to me, they work in the company, some company. They work for three, four, five years with no problem. Suddenly, they hurt their back or they hurt their arm or something healthy happened to them. Suddenly, they get couple of pink slip and after few months, they fire them. And nobody there to fight for them, say this guy's working for you as a refugee for eight years, five years, three years. Don't have any record, suddenly he got injured and they be shoved out in the company and losing all this time and nobody there to stand for them and fight for them. A lot of refugee immigrant be discriminated and abused in our community. Nobody there to fight for them and respect them. Many young children in our community, from refugee immigrant community, get in trouble and get through juvenile system. I not see any of those people that's talking about refugee to be there and say why. Which is very large amount of them gathered trouble because lack of communication, lack of education and nobody there to say, this is wrong. These kids have been taught by somebody else to do something wrong. That's my worry in city of Sioux Falls. I want refugee coming to South City to make the city better, but not just be news. Another thing I wanna bring is very clear. Refugee immigrant been taken advantage in many occasions, especially in the election time. Everybody going to the church, their mosque, their businesses, they shake their hand, they kissing them, they hugging them because they need their vote. After they got elected, nobody say hi to those people. My goal in city of Sioux Falls, to bring more refugees in city of Sioux Falls, but not being taken advantage of them. And in many occasion we do, but we not wanna talk about it because it's just not nice to talk about those kind of stuff. So my request to you as a city council, L S S say they have about ninety people come in already, I wish we get five hundred people. But when they come in in here, we have to have a better system. But when they come in here, we have to have a better system to stand with them. Not only when we bring them and find them a job, but when they get in trouble, we are not there supporting them. And I know people sitting behind me, thank you, we have a people sitting behind me. They agree with me one on one, they consider with me. Kadir, you're right, we're not taking... But when they come in front of you, or they come into the other public, they talk, everything is rosy. Our refugee community bring a lot of value to the city of Sioux Falls. But I hope, again, with this morning's meeting and today's meeting, we all can be a better leader and better server to those refugee immigrants. This way, they have a better future in our community and make the city of Sioux Falls a better community for all of us.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm more than welcome to answer any questions of those issue if you guys have a questions for me to prove those stuff I say is a fact.
You may do that later. Thank you. And I'm not sure that we got your name, sir.
Thank you.
Could you state your name for us? I'm not sure we caught your name at the beginning.
Oh, I apologize. Kadir Awair.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome.
As a city advocate in high-crime areas, I deal with a lot of refugees and immigrants. Some of them fight tribe to tribe, some of them do domestics, all Americans do crime. So we can't downplay that all refugees and immigrants are getting the same treatment from Lutheran Social Services. Because I'm going to tell you something here. Lutheran Social Services, these refugees have a good in these immigrants. But when I'm walking in these high-crime areas and they get thrown into crap-hole apartments, meat hanging from the air conditioner because they don't know to put the meat in the freezer, pooping. They're using the bathroom outside in the hallways. And then I go to them, and I'm trying to get management to jump on board with them on cultural to see why they're doing what they're doing here. And the refugees that I deal with, I don't care what Lutheran Social Services says. They say Lutheran Social Services only brings us here and throws us to the wolves. So we get a job, we get a roof over our head, and that's it. So Lutheran Social Services needs to treat all refugees and immigrants like this because if they want to do a tour, we can go and sit in these high-crime areas with these refugees, how they're living. They don't have it as good as these people sitting here, and it's a shame. Do we accept refugees and immigrants from the kindness of our heart, from Christianity? Or do we accept them because we benefit from it? Because the state gets money from it, federal government gets money, the city gets money, Lutheran Services getting money in their pockets? Every day, I'm trying to fight with these immigrants and these refugees. I have to place them in other rental properties so they don't have to live in a crap-hole that is getting condemned by the city. I do ask that shall pass this resolution, but Lutheran Social Services needs to come on board and treat every immigrant and refugee like these people here are getting treated because most of them are not. Now, if they want to challenge me, we can go ahead, we can go toe-to-toe with Lutheran Social Services because I'm there, I'm on the streets, I'll bring them to their houses. It's outrageous. The crime on crime with the refugees is outrageous. They got to come together and love each other instead of fighting whose tribe is with whose tribe. They need to come together, love everybody. We come from all different backgrounds of life. I'm not from here either. I'm from Canada. We got pushed out of Nova Scotia and Canada, Louisiana. So I know what it's like. But that doesn't mean when we bring these people here, immigrants and refugees, we just put them in a meatpacking plant that's against their religion because that's a job, even though they don't like to deal with pork. We got to find them something that they will like to do that is around their religion. The Muslim religion does not like to be with pork. They don't eat pork, so I put them in a meatpacking plant. But they just throw them in a meatpacking plant because it's a job. Get a job, get a roof over your head, provide for your kids, live the American dream. And then our citizen advocates that are going on crime to crime in the neighborhoods, from refugee to refugee, and immigrants and Americans fighting each other, and then here we go with the living situation. And here we go with people having feces on the grounds. And every single one of them says, "Social Services doesn't teach us everything." "Social Services don't do nothing." And you know what? Oldview Neighborhood helped with Redwood Estates with the refugees and immigrants in there because it was a mess. And they helped. And the reason why some of them helped in there is because they went to Africa, and they went to Uganda, and they knew how to relate to them, to better help them to understand the way of living in an apartment. They never got that with Lutheran Social Services. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors. Thank you. Thank you to everyone else that's here. For all the refugees that have a great story, thank you very much. I'm sure you must know that many of us in America also have horror stories or things we can recall in our life experiences. I'd just like to give a story to maybe or maybe not influence your vote. Two years ago, at this time, I went to meet a gal who's a nurse in a nursing home at a matinee because that's the only time she could get off work and the only time we could meet. We went into our matinee, we came out, and we can visit in her car or my car until she has to go on shift, right? So until I have to get home at that time, when my husband was still alive. We looked in the parking lot, and there's very few cars on Tuesday afternoon at this theater's matinees, but it's a good time for us. A truck came barreling in from the south, and the rows are two by two by two. You've all been to a movie. So there might have been 35 cars. But this particular truck had to come in, barrel, 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 through a row of cars, stop right in front of us. Before he stopped, he hit a car, a small one, upside down, and it moved, literally moved up and back. And my girlfriend and I went, "Ah, ah, ah." And the car stopped, and she and I went under like this. And I said, "I wonder what's going on, who that is." He got out and went into the theater, and I said, "Oh, I think we need to call 911." And she said, "I don't want to get involved." And I said, "I want to get involved," and I took the license plate. And yes, you're right. You're all right. He didn't look like me, and I didn't have any idea who he was. I just knew that he hit a car, hit and run, and stopped his car, went into the theater, and the car was damaged, damaged, because we drove around. Big damage. So when the 911 policeman came, because my girlfriend went to work, I went out to talk to him, and the person that had been in the truck had already left again. And I didn't go into management, that's not my job. I just reported it to police. And they said to me, "Thank you very much. That's all we need." Okay. Then I went overseas because I work with the poor in Southeast Asia and in 56 countries in my past. So this was 2018. When I got home, my husband said, "There's a call for you from a lady from Iowa." Why? "Because she wants to talk to you about a car or something." And I said, "Oh, okay." So I called, and she said, "I want to thank you. I want to thank you so much." I went to a movie theater to meet my sister and her girlfriend in Sioux Falls. She's from Northwest Iowa. She said, "Due to Marcy's law, I couldn't find you or get you or get anything from police or whatever." And I said, "I know what you're talking about. Don't worry. I'm not saying anything. I don't want to know, and you don't have to tell me." She said, "Okay." To make the story short, she didn't have... The person that was driving was visiting an immigrant who was here. That was the immigrant's truck. The person who was driving had no driver's license. The truck person, owner, when they took the license plate back, had no insurance on the truck. The woman, had I not involved myself in that particular situation, she said she wouldn't have had the money to fix her car. It's her only car. She's an elderly on fixed income, coming to visit Sioux Falls in the daytime for a matinee. That's all I'm going to say to you. I can't tell you how to vote. I've lived and worked with the poor in other countries and empowered nationals to help their own people. And yes, I know we welcome people into Sioux Falls. And we also like to be thanked for welcoming them, and we also like to be involved in things they're doing too. But that is a true story. I thought that that day, I said to myself, the posture and the change in our city is negative. The lady from Iowa said, "I don't know if I'm coming back." That's my story. Take it or leave it. Vote's up to you. I know how I'd vote.
Thank you, ma'am. What was your name?
I'm sorry. Linda Johnson. Linda J.
Yeah, that's my fault. I'm getting enthralled in stories and forgetting you get names when you come up. If you could please state your name before you start. No, it's my fault. Welcome.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Can hear you.
My name is Rehana Yagob. I was born in Sudan, and we have to immigrate to country. It's a border of Sudan called Techat, or you can call it Chad, I guess. We arrived here 2009, the United States, and it's almost like 10 years now, 10 to 11 years, I guess. I would like to say that it's not easy to come in a country, like a new country, and if you don't speak really well English. So when I arrived to the United States, 2009, I had to start from high school. And I went to high school, I graduated from high school. And after that, I started at college, but I did not finish. So I had to draft out for some financial difficulties. And it just, coming to the United States, you have to do a lot. It's not that you're coming in as a refugee and you have to get all the help. You don't get all the help we need. So we do our best to stay here. We don't get help 100%, but we, I mean, we are thankful to be in the United States. Better life, a little bit better life, and just better life, and it's also not better, but it's a safer place sometimes too, and it's not even that safe. So I would like to say that when people say we don't like refugees in America or like we cannot help them, or we could... It's just, it is difficult to stay here too. Like, we have to do our best to stay to live. And when we come to the United States, I guess it depends on the case, but they can only help you for a certain amount of time, like three months or like four months, and after that, you're on your own. So I think it's better just to come and if we could actually get help. And like, I would like to just say that it's good to help, but if they could really get the help until they can be able to afford to live by themselves. So I would like you guys to vote, but still get a look at like financial ways, or like how they're going to live their life, or how are they going to go to work, and all that stuff too.
Thank you for that. Hello.
Good evening. Thomas Warner. Born and raised in Sioux Falls here. A little bit of my journey growing up is my mother was a single mom, very involved with our church community. And with our church community, we believed in getting immersed in different cultures as I was growing up. So oftentimes, we would house or invite over for dinner different nationalities growing up. I have very fond memories of that. Some great meals, some great conversations. Fast-forwarding to today, I've lived here my whole life. I have been very heavily involved in the Lyft and Uber community. And over the last couple of years, I've done 3,500 rides on Lyft. A majority of those rides have been foreign exchange students from the colleges. Wonderful individuals, absolutely wonderful. To hear their stories, to hear the different struggles and triumphs that they go through. I want to take a different approach to this conversation tonight, and I want to look at the future. If there's a yes vote tonight, and we take in additional refugees, let's already start the conversation for next year because this is a one-year agreement. So next year, we're going to have the same conversation. So instead of us having this conversation next year of having the wonderful stories and everybody's like, "Please vote yes." Let's have a different conversation. Let's do a case study over this next year to where if there's 100 new individuals that come into our community, let's find out their success rate. Let's find out where they're struggling. And let's have that conversation next year about, okay, this is where Sioux Falls is excelling, this is what we need to improve on. So then that way, we can have a conversation. If city or state funding wants to get involved, where's the best place to put those funds? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Nan Taskin. And I was an immigrant and a refugee in my life. When I was five years old, I was born in Bulgaria, and my family forced to move from Bulgaria to Turkey in a train. So I was a refugee, and I came to the United States as an immigrant, as a green card holder. So my dad did it in Turkey, so he was an educated man. And he gave us the life that the Turkish kid has. And here I came five years ago, and I believe I made it too. I have restaurants in town and some businesses in the Empire Mall because I was educated. So I believe the refugees who came over here, if they properly educated according to our community's needs, it will be more beneficial for them and for our community, and they will blend and serve in our community better. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening. It's been a long night. I just want to say a few things. I'm Julie Asherith, and I've had the opportunity and responsibility to be an educator in the city for 45 years. I taught in the Sioux Falls School District for 27 years, and then I've been at Augustana now as a professor of education for the last 18 years. I was at Hawthorne Elementary 25 years ago when our first group of refugee and immigrant students started to come to our district. And I am here to tell you, after 25 years of working with these children and families, I have had the privilege to witness and qualitative research to witness that every, almost to the single student and family that I had the opportunity to work with, both in the schools and in other endeavors in the city, have been an incredible asset to this city. I am incredibly honored to continue to be in the schools all the time. As a professor of education, I'm out in all of the schools. I'm honored to be a professor where Juju attends, Augustana. She didn't tell you that she's an international peace scholar and studied in Europe this last summer and that she will be a change agent, not only in our city, in our country, but in the world. And those are the types of people that we have welcomed into our community and hopefully will continue to welcome. The other thing I would add is that my grandchildren are the most blessed kids and have more empathy and compassion and wisdom at their ages of 10, 11, and 15 because the majority of their friends come from a different culture and a different country. And it has been a transformational win-win-win in our Sioux Falls schools and community. So I am really encouraging you to consider your vote to be yes, and also for each of you to consider to be an ally and an advocate for all of the citizens of our city that we have the opportunity and honor of representing in Sioux Falls. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Suneet Agashmir, and I'm from Nepal. I don't know if I'll be able to put my thoughts and the things that I want to say in a word, but I am from Nepal, and my parents were born and raised in country Bhutan. Because they had no religion there, they were kicked out from their country, and that's how we became a refugee in Nepal. We had no safe shelters to leave, and we had no basic needs. We had to ask for... We had to like ask for food and stuff like that. So being a refugee is really hard. And the opportunity that we got from the LSS was like, it was a miracle, I would say. I don't know how to explain all this. It's really hard. The things that we faced back in our country was very bad, bad. But getting the opportunity to go to school, you know, like being able to live in this safe environment in just Sioux Falls is amazing. So my parents do work really hard. They go to Smithfield. Both my parents worked there, and they have been working there for about 11 years. We got here in 2009, and I go to SDSU. I, so, I don't know what to say. But do, please think and do stand with the refugees, I would say, because they, everyone, every refugees have their own story. And they, so I'm here speaking behalf of my parents and the refugees all around the world. So please do, do, do vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kiba Ammon. And I would like to address some situations. I know Sarah had come forward, and I too have seen what is in other parts of Sioux Falls where a lot of these refugees go. I'm very happy for these that have spoken tonight, these refugees, who have been afforded the American dream and have had that opportunity here, but not so with all refugees that have been brought here. And I can go into a story, and I don't want to make it a long story, but I knew a young woman who, she worked, where I worked as a custodial person. She didn't speak the language well. I offered to help her learn English. And so I would pick her up over in that part, and I got to know her story. She came over here, her husband was a refugee, and it was an arranged marriage. He went back to find himself a bride. It was where she had never met him before and was brought over here. And you know, just going over there, the story she told, there is a crime problem in that area. And it was where she could tell me at times at night not to drop her off, or not to, you know, come in. And so when we think, you know, that there are those who are given the opportunity to go to college, to have an education, that is great. But at this time, we do have a crime problem in Sioux Falls that we're not addressing tonight. And I would just ask, at this time, I think there needs to be more done about some of the issues of the housing situation and the crime. And I think there needs to be a pause on this resolution at this time, and that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, let's clear the way for the doctor. If he has to get up again, he's gonna pull a muscle.
I thought I'd ask for five minutes for each time I stood up, but that would be the rest of the evening, so that's okay. I'm Dr. Dave Kapaski. I'm the interim president of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to speak to that perhaps personally first. I was involved in refugee resettlement as a military pilot at the end of Vietnam. And the, my last flight out of Saigon was probably two or three hours before the helicopter that you may all know that flew out to the Navy ship. We had over 400 refugees, took all the seats out of the plane and strapped people down to the floor, comfortably, by the way. But, but what I remember to this day is, as we started to roll down the runway with full power on four jet engines, the cheers from the back were audible above the four jet engines. That, that just represented hope to me. It gives me chills every time I talk about it. And it was hope that's represented, I think, in all the stories we heard today. So I'll shift from that to my chamber hat, if that's okay. We've had great work done at the chamber with our, especially our small businesses. And actually, there are approximately 100 small businesses in town that kind of described as maybe ethnic businesses. Or I don't know the exact description, but many refugees and immigrants and such who have started these. They're very important to us, obviously, and we're trying to actually explore more ways to help those businesses be successful, to help integrate them into the business community and the successes that they need to survive here and along with our other small businesses and such as we move along. So my, my real message is that we support the importance of growing our population to meet the needs of our workforce. If we're gonna ask new businesses to come here and grow this city, we need more workers, and refugees are a part of that solution as we move along. And I think if you ask the places that have predominant refugee support for employees, they would say many of the finest employees they've ever had. And I, I think that speaks well to the potential and also, you know, addresses the help that LSS has given, always with the opportunity to improve what we do for them. But we need workers in the workforce. Refugees need hope and opportunity, and I think we can provide that with supporting refugee movement, resettlement again into the community. And I just appreciate your support on behalf of the chamber, our 2,000 members, and the 80,000 employees that those 2,000 members have, many of whom are new Americans and critical to our economy. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I will sit down.
Thanks. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, councilors, brothers and sisters here in the gallery. My name is Cooper Caraway. I'm the elected president of the Sioux Falls AFL-CIO. We represent over 30 local unions here in the Sioux Falls area and thousands of union members, including Smithfield workers, bricklayers, carpenters, electricians, the fire department, bus drivers, your own city employees, librarians, street cleaners, and unfortunately, the people who write you your parking tickets. Now, this has been a weird day for me, and a bit of an uncomfortable day for me, because I've had to stand in government buildings like this. And I've had to, twice, twice today, I've had to agree with the president of the Chamber of Commerce. As, as a union man, that makes me a little bit uncomfortable. I'm gonna have to organize a general strike or something on the way home, just to make myself feel better. But on this, on this issue, management and labor, workers and bosses are in agreement. We unanimously support the resettlement of refugees here in Sioux Falls. This year, 2020, the South Dakota Federation of Labor will celebrate our 100-year anniversary. The South Dakota Federation of Labor was founded in 1920. A lot of our local unions were founded before that, a lot of electricians, bricklayers, carpenters. A lot of those unions were founded in the late 1800s, early 1900s. And many of the founding members of those unions were refugees. Folks from Italy, Poland, France, Germany, folks like my great-grandfather who fled Germany because of continuous war and economic instability in Europe. And so it's without the blood and sweat and work and muscle and intellectual capability of refugees, like the folks who founded the labor movement, without that, without that, we wouldn't be looking forward to the weekend. There were no weekends guaranteed in this country before the labor movement. Without the, the blood and the sweat and the efforts of refugees, we would not be able to depend on a 40-hour work week or an eight-hour workday as a standard work week. No, before that, workers were told routinely that you're gonna work upwards of 18, 19, 20 hours a day. You were going to work every day of the week. If you don't, they were told, if you don't come in on Sunday, don't bother coming in on Monday. Child labor was very common and widespread. Without, without the efforts of the refugees who came here and founded the labor movement, without the efforts of those folks, my daughter wouldn't have spent today in a, in a nice classroom, getting a good education from a good union teacher. She would not be able to be spending her days. No, my seven-year-old, without the efforts of refugees that founded the labor movement, my seven-year-old would have spent today working her fingers to the bone in a mine or a mill. That was regular life for working-class children before the labor movement. Regular people owe so many of the things that we take for granted to the blood, sweat, and tears of refugees, of the refugees that came before us. And as I sit here in the gallery today, and as I sat in the county commission meeting earlier this morning, I couldn't help but, but for a second, allow myself to fantasize and imagine. Imagine the kind of world these new refugee children and children of refugees are going to build. What kind of things, what kind of society they're going to help shape and create, so that my daughter and her children can have the privilege of taking a few things for granted that we have to still struggle with today. So I, the AFL-CIO, our over 30 local unions, our thousands of union members, in the full weight of my office as elected president, we encourage you to vote yes on refugee resettlement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Reverend William Agamiri Daldum. I'm from Sudan. I came to the United States in 1993 from Kenya. Upon my arrival, I was lucky to be hired by the organization that sponsored me, African Alliance, African Refugee Alliance in Houston, Texas. I stayed for a year, then I moved to North Dakota, and in 95, I moved to Sioux Falls. And since then, for the last 25 years, Sioux Falls is the place where I call home. The civil war in Sudan separated me from my family for nine years. From 91 to 99, when my wife and two kids arrived here in Sioux Falls. And it wasn't possible, had it not been for all the help that I got from Lutheran Social Services. The citizens of Sioux Falls are very good people. They opened their home to welcome us as refugees. As a second immigrant to this city, I was so lucky to get a Yabu Sanction Technology and Wells Fargo. And then again, I worked as a state coordinator for a nonprofit organization. I'm also a pastor. I'm a lead pastor at New Jerusalem International Church here in Sioux Falls, and a founder and president of Redemption International Ministry. My ministry involves international evangelism in North Africa and East Africa. I am here to encourage you to vote yes, to encourage refugees to be accepted in this city. Refugees played a very big role in a positive way in this city. They contributed a lot to the local economy, and these are good, law-abiding citizens. I know we are here for a reason. And the reason is that we want to live, and we want to raise our children to be part of this community. I'm so thankful for LSS, for the work that they're doing. They help refugees a lot, and they put them in the path of success. As I stated earlier, that when I came to this country, I worked as a case manager in Houston for almost a year. I've been in their shoes, sometimes working with less funding, lack of budgeting, put a lot of stress, put a lot of challenges. So the shortcoming of LSS should not be something to blame for. I know that they've been doing a very good job. So Sioux Falls is a city well-described by refugees who live in another city in the United States of America, that this is a good place for an immigrant, for a refugee, it's a safe place, especially for those of us who came from war-torn countries. The safety that we found here, the success of life that we found here is something that we are thankful and we appreciate. So considering your vote tonight, that we are people who consider themselves part of this community, and we love this city, and we are proud to be engrafted into this society as Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Good evening.
My name is Neil Tapio. I'm a former state senator and a resident of Sioux Falls. I'd like to thank the Sioux Falls City Council for hosting this valuable hearing and giving these refugees such an amazing forum in which to speak. I also think we should applaud President Trump for providing for local input on the refugee program. Strangely, Lutheran Social Services is suing the Trump administration to put an end to this type of input, trying to silence local elected officials and the people that they represent, South Dakota and the citizens of Sioux Falls, seems like a real twisted lesson to teach refugees about freedom and democracy. I hope we all agree, America is the greatest country in the world. And America is the beacon of freedom for those suffering under oppression and tyranny around the world. Although America has taken in tens of millions of immigrants and refugees over the years, America must be cautious, for there are so many people that despise America and despise freedom. Millions of people around the world are taught to hate America. They display hatred by chanting, "Death to America." Thankfully, President Trump has implemented a travel ban and an extreme vetting program, which, with such simple changes as determining if refugees have connections to organizations that hate America, conducting face-to-face interviews with those that know the refugee, and monitoring their social media accounts. For these changes, President Trump has been attacked for taking the threat of Islamic terrorism seriously. I hope we can agree that extreme vetting will keep us safer. However, further changes must be implemented in the vetting process in order to keep our nation and our communities safe. We must also vet for dangerous political ideologies. Some ideologies, if allowed to take root in America, are so dangerous, they risk the very freedom these refugees seek and that we take for granted. Imagine a political ideology that believes in its own superior rule of law, and that law says that anyone leaving that ideology must be killed, or at a minimum, forever live under the constant threat of death. A simple analysis of pure research data suggests as many as 500 million people believe in that hateful law and ideology. I hope we agree that our vetting system should identify those who believe in such a hateful ideology and keep them the hell out of our country. Our current system does not do that. For that reason, I would recommend we pause the refugee resettlement program until these changes are made. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight? All right, well, thank you all for coming out and your input. Pretty good stuff. We'll go to the councilor's questions. Counselor Erickson?
I have two questions for audience members. One, Betty, if you can come forward, please. The statement that was just made that LSS is suing President Trump, I'd just like you to address that, if you have any knowledge of that or can expand on that.
Yes, Counselor Erickson, thank you for the question. LSS, Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota, is not involved in a lawsuit. The Lutheran Immigration and Refugee Services, which is the national voluntary agency that we have a contract with, is a party to the lawsuit against the executive order. That is not us. Our incorporation is separate. We are incorporated as a... We are incorporated as a private nonprofit here in South Dakota as a 501(c)(3).
Thank you.
Thank you.
My other question, if I can just have one more, not for you, Betty. I'm going to say your name wrong, and I'm so sorry. Tenisa, okay, I was close in my mind, so, Tenisa, if you could come forward, please. I was looking at the resolution, and thank you for this. I did not look at this earlier, and so I appreciate you giving that, and it says, "The consent may not be conditioned on acceptance of certain refugees or any other factors, such as refugees' race, ethnicity, religion, or national origin." As I was reading our resolution, which I did walk over and show this to her, as a courtesy heads-up, it says at the end of our resolution, "Consent may be withdrawn at any time by city council resolution." And so I'd just like you to, in your legal opinion, and Karen and I were talking about this as well, but I know that this is your area of expertise, would you consider this being something that would maybe need to be removed from this resolution? Would it be a condition of acceptance, or thoughts?
Chairman Selberg, Councilwoman, thank you for the question. As an advocate on this issue, I will lean on Lutheran Social Services for their expertise as being directly impacted by this, but my understanding is that there can be no condition to the consent. So in the spirit of that, I would recommend removing all language of any type of condition. And there is a six-page guidance that is at that website that's indicated on the handout that I provided. I only took out the language that pertained to conditions, but there is also guidance that, you know, a letter has to be written and the format of that letter based on a resolution of pass. So the guidance is much more extensive on what next steps would be, and I believe that leaning on LSS South Dakota on how that would have to happen.
Perfect, thank you. And Betty, if you have anything that you would like to add in this, I don't know if this resolution is the exact same one that Minnehaha County passed or not, but I just, err on the side of caution, wanted you both to look at this and see if this is problematic.
I proceed, Chairman. The, I believe the language about being able to withdraw consent may have been mirrored from Governor Gnome's letter of consent, that she had that on the end, and we're furiously looking through the Notice of Funding Opportunity, that's where the guidance is coming from. From just recollection, we believe that--
Page thirty-seven.
All right, thank you. This is an annual process for consent, and so, let me find that page.
Which leads me to, I don't ever recall ever voting on this in the past, and so is this something new that is required by President Trump as far as the counties and the cities need to state verbal consent in order for--
Correct.
--process to take?
Yes, this is a new requirement as of September twenty-sixth, I believe it was when the order was issued, and so that's why it's a little new to all of us, so.
Okay, and if you want to take the time to look at that and address it when you find it, that's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Breckie.
You know, a question for our city attorney. Before an item can be put on our agenda, it's subject to legal review and approval, so I'm assuming, you know, do you have anything to add to this? You know, because, you know, is it safe for us to assume that you have reviewed it for legalities and it is suitable for us to pass this way? Or is it something new that your office is unfamiliar with and we should be engaging in an amendment process?
Thank you, Counselor Breckie. Our office has reviewed it, and we did sign off on it based on what we knew at the time. And looking at this fiscal year 2020 Notice of Financing Opportunity letter, the letter that comes from the mayor would have to give unambiguous and unconditional consent. And so a safe approach would be to amend the resolution and take that last sentence off, even though a resolution, you have that language there, it may be a safer approach to remove that last sentence based on making sure it's--
Is that your recommendation to us as a council?
It would be my recommendation that if you want to make certain it's clear and unambiguous and unconditional, to amend the resolution and take out the last sentence.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
I'll intend to make that amendment when the time comes, but I'll--
Counselor Staley.
Well, Betty, I have a few questions for you, please. And I thank you for having some of us in last Friday and giving us a little briefing on this. Explain to us how Lutheran Social Services would be involved in just immigrant, immigrant status, or what's the difference between a refugee? You laid that out very nicely, but how does someone come in as an immigrant, then? Or is that just, or do you, and do you help immigrants, sort of, other than the refugee status?
Our work is primarily around refugees in terms of the full scope of services that we provide through the Center for New Americans. Our English as a Second Language classes are open to anyone who is seeking to learn English, so that is an area where we do serve people who come on other immigrant status. So they may come in on a visa into the U.S. and need additional language classes. We do have an attorney on staff, an immigration attorney, and primarily that work, again, is with our refugee population and making sure that they are keeping their status up to date, providing the citizen education, et cetera. But if there is time available in their schedules, they can provide some support for immigrants on, and that is a fee-for-service. It's a service people have to pay for.
You know, I have to say that this issue, and I'm grateful we've had such a respectful conversation tonight, but I did, after our meeting last Friday, I put something on Facebook, and it was like, I think there were a total, like, over eight hundred comments that people were weighing in on. And I would say that, in my experience with immigrants, I have had two families from Vietnam that I have taught piano lessons to. One of the refugees, the parents came from Vietnam, he became a cardiologist at Sanford. Another family, he is a very successful small-business person, works very hard. I also have a family from Ukraine that were refugees, so I know that they really are working hard and fabulous citizens. I also had an experience with a family from Liberia that came over, and I don't think, I don't know if they were, I think they were refugees at some point, but they came from Minneapolis, and they came over. They lived next door to me. There were thirteen people in the home. And in that instance, and I think we do need to talk about the concerns that, and we have heard people mention the other side of this, where people maybe do get lost in the system. This family was one of them, and thirteen people, and the children were needing assistance. I worked with them, I tried to help them, I got them school clothes, I got them pool passes, read to them, and they're loving kids, they need a little direction. So I think, from what I've heard today and what I've been hearing this week, is, and Quad, yeah, well, you know, I appreciated what you said, having, wow, great testimony from a man who himself is an immigrant and a refugee, yes. And so we need to be working in our community to support those people, support them in their English fluency, and Counselor Breckie is very committed to that, wanting to do whatever we can to help people have the tools that they need, also supporting them in their living conditions. I was able to go to Redwood Estates, and I'm probably not supposed to say the name of that apartment complex, but it was, it had a lot of people who were probably refugees, they were immigrants, living there, and I would never live there. If you went in there, it was horrible conditions. And we need to make sure people in our community have decent supportive places to exist. Bus service is needed, we're having that conversation now. So I think we need to work to make sure that everybody is vibrantly successful and that we're all supporting each other. So that's my little platform there. I would like you to tell us a little bit, one more thing. The case study idea was very good. I mean, that if we want to show accountability to our citizens who are already here, all of us here, I think saying, as we move forward, that we are given some success stories of, you know, they're here, they're acclimated, they're doing this, we're able to get them the support that they need, that, I love it. I also would like you to explain a little bit about why people are not being located in Rapid City, I don't think Watertown, maybe Millbank, I mean, we've got Huron, Aberdeen, and Sioux Falls. So to me, when I hear this, I think, well, you know, they're coming to our state, because it was a Kristi Noem state thing, why aren't we, you know, having them be located throughout our state?
Let me proceed. That's a very good question, Councilwoman Staley. So over the years, the resettlement program has changed a lot, especially through the Refugee Act of nineteen eighty, that's when a lot of the regulation came into place. So in nineteen forty-eight, when we first started this service, we did have people that we were assisting in resettlement that were settled in many, many, many communities across the state. But with the federal tax dollar came accountability and limitations and restrictions, and so it has evolved that our primary site, probably because that's, this is, Sioux Falls is our place of origin as an organization, we had our start here in Sioux Falls, and many of our services are based in Sioux Falls. We have restrictions on us for the distance we can place outside of Sioux Falls, and I'm going to look to Tim, I think that's sixty miles, a hundred miles now, and so that's kind of our radius that we work with from the Sioux Falls office. To begin initial resettlement versus that secondary migration that Rebecca talked about, to begin initial resettlement, that does take a separate application process to engage in that, and you have to have a certain, and I'm getting into the technical, the weeds of this that I may have to call, phone a friend to help me with here, but you have to have a certain volume in order to get that approved to have another site. So in the situation in Huron, it was Dakota Provisions in Huron that was experiencing workforce issues, and so began to make efforts to address that, and they actually recruited initially some folks from the Mung community in Minnesota, and then later the Burmese from Minnesota. There were actually several hundred secondary migrants in Huron before we had knowledge of that situation, and were then, under the obligations that we have as the designated agency, if those secondary migrants are within that five years of arriving in the United States, or within South Dakota, I should say, we have a responsibility to serve those. So we did work and get, do that application process and get a sub-office established in Huron. That has since closed, we no longer do initial arrivals into Huron, with the exception of a few relatives, family members that are coming in and moving then into Huron. The same thing has been happening in Aberdeen with a couple of employers up there, where as a way to address their workforce issues, they have recruited, you know, folks to come in and work in their plants, some of which are secondary migrants. And so again, we have been in that situation of needing to provide that ongoing support for them. We have not opened a sub-office in Aberdeen, we are just supporting those secondary migrants that are coming in. And I do, I just want to state that, obviously, we've heard of some concerns tonight, we will work to address those through, I think Tim has already reached out to a couple of the folks here in the room with some contact information, so we can do some follow-up. We are not perfect, but we are certainly open when someone brings forward those issues to try to find a resolution to them.
Thank you, Betty. Other questions, councilors?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to move to approve.
Move to approve, Breckie.
Are you seconding that? I just made the motion.
Second your motion.
Okay.
And then I, if I may, I'll make a motion to re-strike from the resolution, consent may be withdrawn at any time by city council resolution, period.
Second, Starr. Okay. So we're voting on the first one first for the resolution?
We are voting on the amendment.
Okay, because, so we've got a motion by Erickson, seconded by Starr on the amendment?
We addressed it earlier. I have no other further comments.
Okay, so we'll go for a vote.
This is on the amendment, right?
Councilmembers Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero, so now we will have a vote on the amended motion?
The main motion--
Main motion.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, let's go to discussion first, all right. Counselor Knightzert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to start with first, just jotting down some notes as I was listening to all the testimony. The first is, this may be my favorite night in my entire term. The stories were absolutely amazing, and it really made me really proud to be an American. It was really humbling to hear some of the things that people have went through. I want to recognize, I think Rebecca did an incredible job of framing this up with, you know, with kind of the facts to start with, so I think that was really, really key. I think I may have heard somebody talking about, one or more people talking about being translators, and I've been, this is a little slightly off the subject, but there were a number of Iraqis, Kurds, and I'm sure others, that risked their lives in helping us, and every single one of them should be on these shores, and I know they're not, they've been waiting and they've risked their lives. They should all be here, and I think it's disappointing that they're not here. We ought to roll out the red carpet and get them all over here as fast as possible, it should have happened years ago. As far as some of the anecdotal, and I want to be respectful here, as far as some of the anecdotal concerns that were brought up, as far as things that may have happened, which may or may not have involved a refugee, I guess I would just say that with those examples, I respect that they were an issue, but that makes the assumption that white, Anglo-Saxon, native-born people never fail, and all of us are, I mean, we all do, there's all, you know, so I, I don't know that there's data that shows that refugees commit crimes higher than the rest of the population or anything, so I would be really careful about taking an anecdotal example and extrapolating that. Finally, in December of twenty eighteen, I attended the Center for New Americas Tour at LSS. At that conference, which other councilors and legislators attended, I was able to learn about the refugee resettlement program. When the mayor's office addressed myself and Counselor Selberg as council leadership, I encouraged them to bring it to the full council, I thought it was appropriate, the city councils, a governing body, would weigh in on this, and I thought it was really important that we could speak as a city council mayor with one voice, it would be more powerful. I strongly support this resolution approving refugee resettlement to continue in the city of Sioux Falls. The United States, among many other nations, is committed to resettling refugees as part of a humanitarian mission. This program represents our highest values as a nation. Refugee resettlement, it's not a new program. These refugees represent the best of our ideals and the American dream personified. Many times, opposition to refugees comes from a misunderstanding of the program or misplaced fears. Too often, the refugee resettlement program is conflated with or implicated in other hot-button issues such as illegal immigration and terrorism. These are highly-vetted individuals who by no fault of their own had to flee persecution and danger and just want a better life. They are and can be an asset to our community, and we should welcome them with open arms rather than denying them the opportunity because of irrational or misplaced fears. I'm proud to vote yes on this resolution.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to repeat what was stated earlier, that refugees, that particular category of immigration-- particular category of immigration undergoes the highest amount of screening of any immigrant coming into the, into this country. Again, the highest amount of screening of any immigrant coming into this country. I'd also like to say that LSS has acted responsibly in the past and I have every expectation that they will continue to act responsibly in the future in determining what their capacity is and then ensuring that they do not exceed capacity. In fact, in conversation with Betty, I had been told that there have been times in the past where they have been asked to take more and she has argued against that because of the capacity issue. So, that demonstrates to me that they're an organization that we, that we can trust. While I was a teacher at Washington High School, I had the opportunity to work with a number of students that were refugees. And it was a difficult transition for them. And it wasn't a transition like just moving from middle school to high school or moving from across town from one high school to another high school. It, it had to do with moving into a new country, learning a new language, a new culture, new traditions. And, and it was not easy. Some of them did struggle, probably not any more than any other students, but I'll have to say that I struggled at times too because I, I understood that some of the barriers are what was preventing their easy access to, I, I guess, the information that I was trying to relay to them and in biology, which by the way, is kind of a language of itself. You use endoplasmic reticulum in a sentence. Well, anyway, I'm happy to say that the vast majority of my refugee students were very successful and oftentimes, they had a work ethic that was much greater than the students that were born here and raised here in the city of Sioux Falls. Maybe even a work ethic that were greater, that was greater than even my own children. So, as a result, they were very successful. You know, so like my students, I feel that the more welcoming we can be as a community, the easier it is going to be for these individuals to make the difficult transition from their home into a new country. It was stated, no refugee wants to be a refugee. I can only imagine what it would be like if the shoe were on the other foot. How would I want somebody else to treat me? I am going to try to make this as welcoming. This community is welcoming as possible and I support and I will be voting yes on this resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Brecky?
I agree with my fellow councilmembers that I view this as a most privileged day to welcome my new neighbors to my city. And I've got a visual aid that I want to use. And this has been my, this is my I got a dream speech. My I got a dream speech for the city of Sioux Falls, for anybody that wants to see it, is that we become jelly beans in a jar. Usually, I use a jar. Jelly beans in a jar, beautiful colors, all mixed up. That's been my dream for 20 years. I've had that dream back when I worked for the city. Because I knew that diversity was our future and it's part of why I came back, because I have that dream. Because my criteria and my dream for the city with jelly beans in a jar, beautiful colors all mixed up, is that we become a diverse, safe, friendly city. I was extremely impressed when I was in Toronto, Canada, years ago. They actually have billboards that say that. And they embraced diversity and it was a beautiful, diverse, safe, clean city. And I thought, wow, we got to do that here. That's what we have to do in Sioux Falls. And my criteria for my new neighbors or anybody that wants to come to this city is threefold. Just three things is all I ask. You be honest, you be friendly, and you be hardworking. That's the Midwestern way. That's who we are, that's our heritage. But all three, not two, not one, honest, friendly, and hardworking, and in my book, you are welcome here. If you're not all three of those things, I hope you're uncomfortable here and I hope you go somewhere else. But for these refugees that are coming, you know, that are coming in as, as by way of this consent agenda night, I'm glad we have the opportunity to do it because it created this dialogue and it created this forum. And there's something else that I want to talk about just a minute because I sat in with this, you know, with this on Betty. I have talked to the Multicultural Center, I've talked to STI, I've talked to LSS, I've talked to, I see several folks in the crowd that I talked to back when I was on the campaign trail about my passion for fluent English. And what I discovered when I talked to every entity that would talk to me about what we're doing or how we're doing for these people that are coming to our community, there was one thing that I thought could make a huge difference that we're not doing a very good job at. You know, we, we are, LSS does a great job of bringing them in here and getting them started, but they often get criticized, you know, and call, and say, and told that they, they're dumping them off. I think what people need to understand, and this is what, you know, Councilmember Staley was referring to when she talked about my passion for fluent English, and I've learned this along the way, there's different kinds of English. There's workplace English, there's conversational English, and there's fluent English. Workplace English takes about six to eight months and that's what they're paid to do. Conversational English takes about three years. And you can use it and you can do a joint effort and kind of do it in a workplace program. You can eventually learn conversational English. Fluent English takes seven years. That's a commitment. To my way of thinking, the, where we fall short is in the conversational English and the fluent English. And the opportunity exists for, for partnerships between government and the private sector in business and the, in the teaching entities, LSS, Multicultural Center, STI, to come up with the programming that gives people that opportunity to go from, from workplace English to conversational English to fluent English. Seven years is a long time, but to me, the difference is this. Workplace English gets you that first job. Conversational English gets you that second job. And fluent English gets you any job. And, and if we can make a commitment, you know, to do a better job of that, I think we can make a big difference. And I've been told, again, that we're doing well with the children, you know, we're doing well at getting them into the jobs, but then we stop. And if you track it backwards, here's what happens when you go backwards. When you go backwards and you don't commit to fluent English and you don't commit to conversational English, what you get is stuck in that job. And when you get stuck in that first job, then you end up trying to do three jobs to make a living wage and you lose your hope for the American dream. You get stuck in that and you became our next welfare, welfare recipient. So, the conversations that I want to start tonight are how, in, in, in how as a community, you know, government, working with the private sector, because what we're talking about is workforce development and welcoming our new neighbors, just like, I don't see any Native Americans in the room, just like how we all got here. We got to help each other, lift each other up and help move each other forward. So, I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity. I want to continue the dialogue. I had conversations with Betty and Tim after a meeting we had earlier this week about the possibility of the city, you know, doing some funding, you know, perhaps with a joint, a, a private sector effort, just like we're doing with STI, to do some, to give them the opportunity to teach conversational fluent in, in English in some sort of a joint program. And I think, you know, that would help them because it would help them with their image issues and they have the connections. They have the relationship. They know who you are and where you are and what you need and people are comfortable going to them. So, hopefully, this whole dialogue can be a springboard for us as a community to do a better job of welcoming our new neighbors. But for, for me tonight, I look forward to it and I thank you all for the opportunity.
Anybody else? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A, a friend of mine earlier tonight pointed out to me that sometimes this group of, and the dais can be a little decisive and we mix it up a little bit and we find argue, things to argue about that are there. But what you're going to see tonight is us come together as a group over an issue that's vital to our community and that's being a welcoming community. It's about coming together to give people opportunities that have suffered some real hardships in their lives. And there are people in our community that are native-born that have had their issues as well. Our Native American community's had their share of issues through the years. But watching us come together as a group tonight is something that I'm going to be very proud of on this vote and when I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else?
Well, I don't know, I, that I can say it any better than it's been said. I don't even know if I'm supposed to speak as the chair if I've moved over here, but I would just quickly say, it has been a special evening. I would concur with especially Counselor Nitzer's remarks. It's been very moving having everybody show up tonight and share their experiences and I'm very proud to support the resolution, so thank you very much. I think we've got a motion by Erickson, seconded by Brecky, and I think what we've got on the table now is a vote on the main motion as amended. All right, let's take the vote.
Councilmembers Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 16, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, adopting the anti-hate statement released by the Human Relations Commission.
Good evening.
Hello. Members of city council, my name is Alex Ramirez. I am the current chair for the Human Relations Office. Before I start, I want to say that I want to thank you for your service and I do respect what you do and you work here. This is my first time here, so it's been a long night for me, but it's well worth it as we can see. The anti-hate resolution started because about five months ago, a few concerned citizens came to our office because they had seen this kind of flyer being passed around in, in a park by the KKK. And what really made me upset is to see that they were passing it along with a, with a candy, which makes me think that they're trying to reach our young communities. That was, and I don't know, have you had a chance to look at the resolution? I don't know if I should put it here. I don't know how to do that either, so maybe someone, I mean...
You can just set it down?
Just set it down?
Yes, he's coming up to help you.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, there it is. And so, you know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure, first of all, is that this is, that this was really something that was happening and, and with a little looking around, a little digging, we, we found out that not only has it been happening, but it's been happening more and more every year. And I think, you know, when you think about the history of the KKK, they pretty much stand for, you know, hate, racism, violence, and even murder. So, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know that there is anyone in, in this room that would, that wouldn't agree that, you know, we have to stand up and do something about this. Unfortunately, yes, there is a little bit of, you know, issue when you talk about, you know, the First Amendment and, and, you know, the right to, I don't know, I guess distribute this kind of propaganda, but I think as, as a city and especially as, as a human, the Human Relations Commission, we, we have a duty to, to stand up against this. And so, I'm not going to make it too long again because this has been quite a night, but I, I would hope that you would adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item?
I have somebody else coming up from the deep south here. I want to thank Human Relations, always will respect Human Relations, but this was a political move. I never seen any politicians up here, never seen them raise issues on racism and all of this stuff throughout the year, but by election time, we all have been at time. Piss this me off to know tomorrow. Human Relations shouldn't even got involved in it because it was political in the first place. We have people from Texas here that we know what racism's all about. The Black, the Black Panthers and the KKK hasn't been arrested for years and they're still lively burning down churches, okay? This resolution don't mean nothing. The N-word, calling people crackers, tortillas, wetbacks. So, what they should have done besides going to Human Relations is do like what I did. I called a Supreme Court, write them, have them get back with you, and add the language into the law. Milton Hicken shouldn't have never even, this is just words on a piece of paper. Are you kidding me? We have racism like no tomorrow here. This is not going to stop by doing a resolution to remind people not to do it. We need teeth in the law. The guy that called these teenagers the N-word, and I got on the phone and I called the prosecuting attorney and this, the detective on that, and I talked to the parents of that incident. And how the word of the law is, if there's no violence by calling people racism, it's not a crime. Do I always agree with them going down the street calling people crackers or the N-word or the little tortillas? Absolutely not. But we cannot make a difference unless we go to legislation and we go to the Supreme Court and put it. This resolution is nothing but a piece of paper and a political move. Julian is from Louisiana, just like me, he should know better not to go in front of the, the Human Committee with this baloney. To disgrace the African-American community, it's a disgrace for me. It's a disgrace for the people in the deep, dirty south. He should know better not to do it. What you need to do is be more proactive and get out on the streets and help law enforcement and testify against people in hate crimes and get to your legislature and get to your Supreme Court and put it in law books. This resolution don't mean nothing, nothing whatsoever. Y'all want to get a taste of racism, go to deep, dirty south. I wish that I would just be called the N-word every day here, nothing like Georgia, Texas, Florida, Louisiana. It's a different kind of racism here. By a resolution, it's not going to stop by just a resolution. So, I, I, I'm totally against this resolution and y'all going to pass it, I'm sure. But this was a political move and Mr. Julian's not going to get nowhere because what you need to do when you're politicians, go knock on people's doors and get to know your neighbors and get your votes. Not come here and bring up an issue that I've been dealing with since I came and put my foot through Sioux Falls' door here with the racism. I already knew it the minute I stepped foot in this place. It was a Christian place, white place, and it was racial here. The minute I walked in here, I could smell it. I, I, some of you councilmembers, y'all was here when I first said it, when I came here. So, why, why is these politicians not here doing it? It's because they want to run for something. That's not going to get you your votes to get in office. By going to Human Relations, to hearing, to get this passed so the mayor can sign off on a resolution. Resolution that don't mean nothing.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening. I think you just heard my name a few times. My name is Julian Baudouin. I am a resident here in, in Sioux Falls. I'd like to first just, I, I, first, I'd like to thank you for your words and your, your work in the community. I too, and my wife as well, have worked in this community and lived in this community for 14 years. As a matter of fact, I'm a law enforcement officer in this community and I've served in that capacity for the last 10 years. I've served also on the Board of Directors at the Sioux Falls Multicultural Center for the last three and a half years. I have also served as the Vice President of Establishing Sustainable Connections and I've been a member of that organization for the last four years. I am also currently the Assistant Director at the South Dakota African-American History Museum and I've served in that capacity for the last year. So, this to me is not a political stunt. This is my life. This is what I do. I didn't come to speak on my... I didn't come to speak on my credibility, but I felt that I needed to do so. What I did come to do, however, was thank Mayor Tenhaken, thank the Human Relations Committee, or Commission, excuse me, and Alex and his staff for the important work that they have done and continue to do. There were several items that my wife and I brought up at the Commission's meeting, and they were extremely welcoming, along with the... Actually, the Sioux Falls Police Department was in that meeting, and they happened to sit in on the meeting, and we learned some other things that were going on in the community as well. So, really and truly, my intent today was to come up here and thank you guys for the work that has been done. But as I said earlier, I felt I had to really talk about myself a little bit, which is unfortunate. This is not about me, this is about our community. So, thank you for your time and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Jen Dryski. I want to thank everyone for bringing forth this resolution. I spoke to you last fall when we brought forth the issues of the KKK literature and the other hate issues. I'm a Jewish mother. I spoke to you about how my concerns of keeping my five-year-old son safe from antisemitism, and unfortunately, since then, antisemitism has grown exponentially in our community on the local and national stage. And so, with this resolution, I'm finding comfort in knowing that our community is going to become safer for my son. When we study the Holocaust or any atrocity in history, we always ask ourselves, what would we do today in the face of hate? Would we be a bystander? Would we be an upstander? Most of us, I believe, hope we will be upstanders, fighting for goodness, kindness, justice, and equality. Most of us want the future to look back on our lives today and see us as change agents, champions for good, dismantlers of hate. Now is the time to ask, what do we do to protect our children from hate, prevent our children from learning from hate? Tonight is that first step. I do ask that we include our LGBTQ family and friends, neighbors, and community members in this resolution by including sexual orientation, as they experience life affecting hate, just as others listed in the resolution. Tonight, I hope to be able to go home and tell my son that Sioux Falls agrees that hate has no home in South Dakota. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could say your name again, please, sir.
Kadir Awera.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, City of Sioux Falls is a wonderful city we're living in, and that's why I choose to be in this city for 40 years, oh, 43 years. But believe me, still is a lot of difficulty against the ethnic community, refugee, immigrant, African-American community, Native American community, and racism exists in City of Sioux Falls. That's not mean all City of Sioux Falls. One thing is, we have a problem in City of Sioux Falls. We have a small group of people doing something bad, then we accusing everybody. I don't like to show this, okay, but I'm going to show it to you guys. This is me. In 2014, as a proud Muslim, I went back to Kurdistan and fight the Islamic radical people. But then here, I've been called a Muslim terrorist. It is shameful to those people accusing 1 billion, 1 billion point seven Muslims around the world. 1% or 2% is radical, and it's a bad apple, but we calling every one of them is the same situation. You don't believe how many names I've been calling City of Sioux Falls for 40 years I live in here. With due respect, I don't like my friend be upset with me. I even been called stupid Mexican, go back to Mexico, and I am even not Mexican. That ignorant some people is in this town. Muslim terrorist, September 11, I have more than a dozen letter of the threat, they're going to burn my house, but I stood strong and I defended my faith. They calling refugee, immigrant, many different names in the workplaces and stuff, and I pick up the phone and call those manager, "Shim, and you guys doing this." So, this resolution, my, I agree with her, not going to do any differences, but going to send a message to the people in City of Sioux Falls. We do not accept... Ladies and gentlemen, in every culture, in every religious, in every group, we have a few bad apple. I've been spit on in City of Sioux Falls eight time in my life, not because I was drunk, not because I was a bad person, not because I stole something, just because who I am. I am a refugee, proud Kurdish man in this community, and that's got to be stopped. Do we going to stop everything with this resolution? No, because still is going to be bad apple in there, is still going to be ignorant people in there. They hate you for no matter who you are. But we, as the ethnic community, have to be a lot better than that and be stronger than that and fight back, not with the fist, with the communication. I have a people tell me, "How you sit with this guy? He hate Muslim, or he hate refugee." That's my job to sit with him. That's my job to sit with him, to make him understand, I am a father, I am a husband, I am a son, just like you are. And ladies and gentlemen, look in your finger, you have five finger, each one of them is different. Imagine if all your finger is like this, how ugly hand we going to have. So, God created us different for a purpose. I learn from you, you learn from me. I'm going to say this to make you guys laugh. When I come to Sioux Falls first time, '77, I saw the football. I thought, this is the dumbest sport I ever seen. Football, what's going on? 10 people jumping in this... But I didn't know, three of my son is going to grow up and be the best basketball, football player in Washington High School, and one of them play for SDSU, okay? Because I learn, I want to be part of the dream of America. So, please, I want the viewer listen to me, do not judge anybody in City of Sioux Falls because of color of the skin, or nationality, or the culture they coming from, because each one of us have our own value. So, I encourage you to push for this, and we need to do a better job for tomorrow for all of us. We are not responsible what happened yesterday, but ladies and gentlemen, we all responsible what's going to happen tomorrow, next week, and next month in that community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Cooper Caraway, President.
Again, my name is Cooper Caraway.
I'm the President of the Sioux Falls AFL-CIO. My mother is Native American all the way back. My father is the child of German immigrants. I was born in Decatur, Alabama. My father was born in Greenwood, Mississippi, 10 miles away from where young Emmett Till was lynched for allegedly whistling at a white woman, which she confessed on her deathbed never even happened. I was born in Decatur, Alabama. I spent the first 10 years of my life in Alabama, and it feels like my recollection is that nearly every single weekend, a black church was burned down. Being racially, growing up racially ambiguous, I suppose, there weren't many natives that lived in Alabama, makes me feel at home here in South Dakota, but there weren't many natives that lived in Alabama, so I, too, as like Kadir, I was called basically whatever kind of brown you didn't like. So, at the beginning, as a child, I was called a Mexican, but as I got older and after September 11, I was referred to as Muslim, Persian, Middle Eastern, Afghan, Iraqi, any, all of those things. I was elected President of the Sioux Falls AFL-CIO in 2017. The first thing we did was ban white supremacists or anyone who held, who was a member of a white supremacist organization or held the beliefs of white supremacy. We banned them from positions of any kind of union leadership. It was the first thing we did when I was elected. After that, I was interviewed by a couple of national news outlets to talk about that. We're the first, Sioux Falls is the first Labor Council in the country to ever do that. There's 400 Labor Councils across the country. The AFL-CIO has entities all over the country. We were the first ones to do that here in Sioux Falls. Shortly thereafter, we started receiving death threats directly to the Labor Temple, threats towards my life, threats on the lives of other union leaders here in Sioux Falls, and threats on the Labor Temple itself, on 10th and Fairfax. But we've handled that. There's about 100 times more union members than there are KKK members, so we're confident that any conflict we could handle. But this resolution, words mean stuff, all right? Now, I'm here to say, speaking for labor, the Ku Klux Klan, particularly in the South, but all over this country, has murdered and engaged in the murder and conspired to murder over 1,000 union organizers across this country, white and black, white and black. They have lynched white union organizers all over Florida and in my home state of Alabama. So, the AFL-CIO and the labor movement is 100% opposed to the KKK. In fact, the KKK, the Ku Klux Klan, has propaganda videos online with my face in them that say the face of hate right across it, face of hate. So, the AFL-CIO here in Sioux Falls particularly has a vested interest in the fight against white supremacy and the fight against fascism, and how that manifests in domestic terrorist organizations like the Ku Klux Klan. We support this resolution. We applaud Julian, we applaud the Human Rights Commission, we applaud the city for considering it, we applaud everyone who is involved in this and taking that first step. But I'm here to tell you, the working-class people of Sioux Falls and the union members of Sioux Falls are ready to take the next step with you, and then the next step, and then the next step, until organizations like the KKK and like whatever that biker gang that drives around with swastikas on their back, any white supremacist domestic organization, we are here to take all the steps we need to take until white supremacist terrorism and the culture of white supremacy is wiped out in Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a powerful message. My name is Sam Sykes, and going up in the South. Oh, man, so many stories, I have to keep myself humble. I tell a lot of them, but I'm only going to tell you one, this one particular story about this matter of fact that I used to work for here in Sioux Falls. Well, the dude didn't like the fact that something happened on the plant, and he automatically accused me because of my color or whatever be the case. But he called me the N-word, and it stuck with me for a long time. And I got some people behind me. These people press charges on me, I mean, we actually sued them. We didn't get that much, but he sit up there and he laughed at me the whole time, and it stuck with me. It still stick with me today. I get tears going when I think about it. Now, hate goes a long way. There's a power of life, life and death in your tongue. So, you don't, you don't, you're not born with hate. Somebody's teaching you that, just like somebody's going to teach you to love. We all got to pull together on this. You see it? I got a lot of kids. My kids come up to me every day, something different at school. It's all about hate. We're in a world of hate times. I don't care what that dude said about Donald Trump, he's a hater. You know what I mean? That's just my opinion. We all have opinions, depending on what's hate or what's love, but what's right, though. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to do the standard. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but here I am getting up.
Your name, please.
Megan Myers. I live here in Sioux Falls, and I'm a member of the Human Relations Committee, Commission. And just wanted to speak really quickly. You know, there's been some words said about a resolution like this not having any teeth. And one of the main reasons why we really wanted to pass this resolution and why we're really excited that this resolution has gotten to this point and why we're very happy that this has come to this point and that it has had the strong support of the mayor and the city. You know, the really important thing that the Commission does, and one reason why I'm very happy to be part of the Commission, you know, the Commission, the really important thing that we do is we hear cases of discrimination that people file with us if they feel that they've been discriminated against in the workplace and in housing. And if you've been discriminated against, right here in the, it's right here, and I'm sorry I couldn't put it down, but I need to read it. Based on race, color, creed, sex, religion, ancestry, national origin, familial status, or disability, and, you know, we can debate on what we would like to add into that at a later date, by means of education, persuasion, conciliation, and enforcement of Chapter 98 of the Codes of Ordinances of Sioux Falls, if you feel that you've been discriminated for any reason at all, you know, those cases come before us, and we have a panel, and that's what the Commission decides. And that's a really important thing that we do, and that's one reason why we really wanted this to come before the city and for this to get the attention that it has and for it to get media attention, because a lot of people don't know that if you've been discriminated against, you only have a limited amount of time to file those complaints. And if you don't file it within that period of time, sometimes those complaints don't get heard, and justice delayed is justice denied. So, we're really happy this is coming before you guys. We really appreciate your support, and I really appreciate all of these issues tonight getting the attention that they deserve. So, thank you to everybody who's here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, councilmembers. Taniza Islam, South Dakota Voices for Justice. I'm a proud American Muslim. I'm a first-generation American born to immigrant parents who settled in Bay City, Michigan. This resolution, as has been mentioned, words matter. Our mission at South Dakota Voices is to fight anti-Muslim, anti-refugee, and anti-immigrant bigotry across the state, and we've been doing that effectively for two years. So, addressing hate is very important organizationally and personally. I thank the Human Rights Commission for bringing this forward, and I hope we can continue to expand the list. Hate impacts individuals severely. It causes trauma, and if there isn't a statement from the city or where someone lives to feel like they understand what hate is, then you feel like you don't belong. So, I urge you to vote yes on this resolution as well, so that we are accepting of this issue and can work collaboratively together to fight it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Delinka Bodewan. I'm Julian Bodewan's wife, and I just wanted to share a few of my thoughts about the Commission's submitting this resolution. Thought of Sioux Falls being a welcoming community was starting to be a concern that it was possibly fading away, and so the fact that we were able to bring this concern to the Commission and have them address it, bring it to the city, the mayor, here are concerns, and we're standing here today thanking you all for adapting this and accepting this and having our city speak out against this hatred. I'm very pleased to say that I'm proud to be a part of a community that will speak out against this. And because of the ability of our local leaders to listen and act, we're able to call out racism when we see it. Many may ask what official denouncement will do for us who experience racism daily. This is a step in our city, becoming anti-racist. It is simply not enough to speak about it. We must act upon what we see and educate on why it is considered as such. So, we do appreciate this, and yes, there is a lot more work that needs to be done. It does not stop here, and the fact that anyone that is willing to come together and work as a community, whoever has thoughts and ideas of how we can be better, I say that it would be a great idea for us to work together, and thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
Last time tonight, I promise. I happen to think that people should be nice to each other. I mean, it's not a hard concept, but it's, people should be nice. And this resolution that you're going to probably pass tonight is a step in the right direction. I mean, it's hard to come up against an anti-hate resolution. It'll help. It'll help to raise awareness, it'll help to increase education and get people going together. I'm all for it. But of course, a resolution is not... But of course, a resolution is not enough in and of itself. You've gotta do some real work after that. And we should track down racial bias that's inherent, say, in our criminal justice system, particularly in drug prohibition, and figure out how it got there, and then get it back out again. And a resolution, you know, it'll help. So go ahead, let's pass it.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Neil Tapio, and I wanted to address, I didn't expect to address this issue today, but I wanted you to consider something that goes a little bit beyond the stories that we've heard tonight. There are a group of wonderful women up in Aberdeen, South Dakota, that was labeled a part of a hate group. And their crime, according to the Southern Poverty Law Center, who traffics in promoting hate, their crime was bringing a speaker to Aberdeen, South Dakota. That speaker was sold into child marriage at the age of thirteen. For four years, she was raped every day by her husband in a forced marriage. They brought her to Aberdeen to tell a story. They followed up her story with a minister, a Christian minister from Iran. His name is Sharam Hadian. He has a ministry out of Seattle. It's an amazing ministry. He talks about his conversion from Islam to Christianity. He talks about what it's like to grow up under Sharia law. Sharia law is one amazingly dangerous legal system. What I referred to earlier was that every Islamic country has a punishment for leaving Islam. Nineteen Islamic countries has a punishment for death for leaving Islam. Google it. Look it up. For this, you become labeled a hater. So pointing out hate, imagine living under that system. Saudi Arabia, Iran, Iraq, Jordan. That law, that belief system, is the root of terror. Imagine if you live under that system, and you're a fourteen-year-old girl, and you wanna leave it to tell your story. You become a person that falls under this hate legislation. I just want you to think about that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Ethan. I've lived here in Sioux Falls for just a couple of years now. I am a supervisor at one of the businesses in town, I'll just leave that out. But I just wanted to note that even though this resolution may objectively be words on a piece of paper, the idea of it goes a lot farther. What this is doing, this is sending a message to kids at home that are gonna hear about this on the news or from their parents. This is gonna send a message to business owners or other people in any position of power that maybe hold any sort of discriminatory, white supremacist, whatever type of views, putting them on notice that, hey, from the top down, we're not gonna let this fly. And that's a lot more important than, I think, is necessarily evident on the surface. And another thing I'd just like to bring up is just that, even though, you know, I don't have any experiences like any of the other speakers we've had up here, but I can speak for anybody I've ever known that has been a half-decent human being, that there's no reason why anything that's mentioned in this resolution should be accepted in any form, including fear mongering, and basically distortion of facts. But I'll leave it at that, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the councilors with questions. Counselor Nitzer?
I'm gonna move approval. Nitzer?
Second, Kylie.
Okay, move approval for Nitzer, second by Kylie, and Counselor Nitzer?
First of all, I want to thank the Human Relations Commission for their good work and for bringing this important issue to us. The City Council has consistently affirmed its support of a more inclusive community where hate, discrimination, and intolerance have no place. In fact, the City Council almost two years ago, on March 20th, 2018, unanimously, eight to zero, adopted a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls supporting a more inclusive community. I want to read you the last two paragraphs of that resolution. Whereas we support and encourage the citizens of Sioux Falls to establish and maintain a welcoming and inclusive community and to foster respect for all persons, regardless of race, religion, creed, gender identification, sexual orientation, age, disability, ancestry, and country of origin. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, that this City Council of democratically elected representatives represent and support all members of the community and condemn acts of hate, violence, and discrimination. While I wholeheartedly support the intent and values expressed by the Human Relations Commission in the proposed resolution, myself and Counselor Kylie believe we should go even further by including by reference our previous resolution. That's why we have worked together to craft an amendment to this resolution that reaffirms our commitment to the cause of promoting, promoting a more inclusive community where hate has no place. This amendment allows us to join with the Human Relations Commission to say with one voice that hate has no place in our community. And so I am going to make a motion to amend by adding, the Human Relations Commission's anti-hate statement is adopted as follows, and adding a final paragraph after the Human Relations Statement that states, in addition, the City of Sioux Falls reaffirms its commitment to supporting a more inclusive community and incorporates Resolution thirty-eighteen, adopted March 20th, 2018, into this resolution as if fully restated.
Second, Kylie.
Okay, we have a motion by Nitzer, second by Kylie for the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
It's pretty self-explanatory. We made a statement in 2018, and I think we ought to simply reaffirm it, and we also make no change to the Human Relations Commission's statement, and we make, we all speak with one voice and one message.
Counselor, any other comments on the amendment? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. And before we do, before we vote on the amendment, I'd just, again, I'd like to thank the Human Relations Commission, too, for their work on this. And as Counselor Nitzer stated, we think that our resolution actually went a little further in a few areas, and it does, as you saw previously, add sexual orientation and gender identification, as well as age, to the resolution being presented by the Human Relations Commission. Words are meaningful. I mean, how do you, how do you even begin without at least starting with a dialogue? And whether or not we have addressed it sufficiently, we have to at least discuss it and encourage more action to ensure that every citizen in the City of Sioux Falls is free from hate and discrimination. So any chance that I have to speak up and stand up against hate, I will take that, and I'm taking that position this evening. I hope that our fellow councilors will vote yes on this amendment. And I thank my fellow councilors, everybody, except for Counselor Brecky, who were here in the March of 2018, and you participated in that as well, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments on the amendment? Counselor Brecky?
I was in the audience.
Granted.
I actually was.
I'm sure you would've been there if you, if you could have.
I will be short. I was, I'm on my soapbox, I can't go off, but I'll be brief. I do believe words matter, but I do also agree with several of the speakers tonight that if we pass this and do nothing more, we have said something and done nothing. And, but it is a start. The dialogue is where you start, and you have to start somewhere. You know, our council is going to be discussing budget proposals on February 25th. There needs to be some programming. There needs to be more than, because we could just do this every year and send a message, but it only goes so far. And I think, again, we have an opportunity, because we live in this part of the country that we do, and we can see what happens on the coast if we do nothing. We have to be more assertive as we see these issues coming our way. We have to put our catcher's mitts on and find out those programs and those things out there that are working in some of those, those other communities. You know, I, my councilmembers all said it very well. I don't, I don't care about your race, I don't care about your religion, I don't care about your sexual preference, I just have no tolerance for mean-spirited people, and they don't have a place in this community. And I think we have to do more than just talk about it, and I'm hoping that we can have some dialogue about it, and, you know, just take advantage of the opportunity that has emerged tonight by putting, by using this as a platform, and what the, you know, and again, thanking the Human Relations Commission for what they brought forward. And I hope to, I hope to be one of the voice pieces that continue to move this football down the field.
Thank you. Let's take a vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmembers Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes. That passes seven to zero. Any further discussion? I'll take a vote on the main motion as amended.
Councilmembers Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes. That passes seven to nothing. Is there any new business? Move to adjourn, Starr. All right, all in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.